Mayor Moore, it is 7:00 PM if you'd like to call the meeting to order. Mayor Moore, you are muted.
Oh dang. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening to the Khatadi City Council Meeting, the joint meeting of the Khatadi City Council and successor agency to the former Khatadi Community Redevelopment Agency, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. And, uh, do we have a vote called in, Ms. Burgess?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here, thank you very much. And, uh, Mr. Obed, would you please provide us to introduce our staff that we have present tonight?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, on my Zoom screen, I can see everyone, but I assume we're all here. So, uh, we should have Michael Parrish, the Chief of Police. We should have Noah Housh, um, who is our Community Development Director. Angela Quarter, who's our Administrative Services Director. And Craig Scott, who's our Public Works Director and City Engineer. As well as, of course, Lauren Burgess, our City Clerk. Can you talk to her?
And you, our esteemed tour manager, Mr. Obed. Appreciate that. Uh, and now if you will join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Of which. Which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God. With liberty and justice. All.
Thank you. And now do we have, uh, two little minutes on the notice of whether they are reading, while the discussions of ordinance, just ordinances introduced and adopted?
Move to approve, this is Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, is that the January 26th minutes, Councilmember Harvey?
There's January 26th, and there's a special closed session on January 27th.
That's both of them, I'll second that. Here's Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, can we get a vote called?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, we are much ahead along the announcement. Uh, for those in the audience and those out in the public, um, meeting organizations in New and Tennessee, we view the confirmation and performance with the parliament and the adopted City Council, the meeting agenda includes items placed on action item, or the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relative to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda often includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place only intended that citizens have a right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government shall allow. However, if the City Council demands you respond, it should not be perceived as fitting obedience or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformation, or purposely biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all areas, and maintenance for our street, park, and public building. See details on the web at khatadicy.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Khatadi Community Alerts via text or email, encourage this sign up at mixel.com, or by texting your zip code, 949312888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive service and continue to offer all services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed for walking traffic, including the current health officer queue. During this time, our services are temporarily conditioned to phone and web based, as well as appointment by request. Staff continuing to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@khatadicy.org. If you have a non-emergency issue, abnormal physical disorder, you can contact us at 707-792-4611, and of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for dates on the city website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Mixel, and Mixo. Thank you for the announcement, and now we're going to move on to the proclamation. So, in light of the recent recognition from the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors, we have a proclamation. Well, we had a proclamation. Oh, here we go. And Sonoma County has declared, um, a declaration of unity for Sonoma County residents called, uh, United in Kindness. And with that proclamation, I'd like to read this. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Khatadi for claiming a pool of the Sonoma County Bold Resolution and endorsing the United in Kindness campaign. Whereas on June 9th, 2020, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors unanimously approved a bold resolution endorsing the Sonoma County United in Kindness campaign. And whereas the United in Kindness campaign promotes and encourages all Sonoma County residents to find ways to foster and sustain acts of kindness throughout the community. And whereas the Khatadi City Council is in agreement with, finds value in and supports the intent of bold resolution. And whereas we recognize that kindness set forth when needs to be human. And whereas we acknowledge the positive relationship profoundly in kindness. And whereas we believe all of us benefit from living in a community in which kindness is a guiding instrument. And whereas we are proud that our half million Sonoma County neighbors come from diverse backgrounds, beliefs, and traditions in pursuit of joyful and healthy living. And whereas we believe that freedom from hateful speech, bullying, discrimination, and violence is a human right. And whereas we believe holding a mute requires a place to grow and learn in peace and safety, guided in kindness and care. And whereas research shows both social and emotional skills, including kindness, can be taught and learned. That children benefit from these lessons, and that children who participate in school programs design and teach social and emotional skills, improve their behavior toward others, have better economic performance, and show improved social emotional awareness. And whereas we understand that schools and hostile teachers, where kids feel threatened and distracted, make learning more difficult. And whereas the United in Kindness campaign actively works with Sonoma County schools to promote sustainable, self-guided discussions on inclusiveness, respect for others, anti-bullying, and daily acts of kindness with students. And whereas in order to sustain the resilience, health, and safety of all community-friendly residents, we affirm in a social fabric that promotes and encourages acts of kindness, and that this allows harm to individuals and groups based on ability, age, appearance, ethnicity, gender identity, language, race, religion, sexual preference, and social economic position. And whereas over 1,500 individual Sonoma County residents have signed the United in Kindness Declaration of Unity, attached. And whereas 42 Sonoma County organizations, secular and non-secular, have endorsed the United in Kindness Declaration of Unity. Now therefore, let people claim on this 9th day of February, 2021, by the City Council of the City of Khatadi hereby supports the bold resolution and endorses the United in Kindness campaign. Be it further proclaimed that the City Council encourages all Sonoma County residents to find ways to foster and sustain acts of kindness throughout the community in their daily life and activities. Be it further proclaimed that the City Council encourages our leaders in education, government, business, health, and faith to build, affirm, and promote through education and initiatives their area of influence, a county that promotes kindness and honors human rights. Be it further proclaimed that as an example of the people of Sonoma County, the City Council will strive to engender and cultivate kindness in conducting the business of the council. Thank you.
Mayor Moore, we do have, uh, two attendees tonight from United in Kindness that would like to comment.
I would certainly welcome that, Ms. Burgess, before you open up that public comment tonight.
Mo, go ahead.
Greetings, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, greetings. My name is Mohamed Jabari. I have been living in Sonoma County for the past thirty, thirty-nine years. I am the co-founder of the Interfaith Council of Sonoma County, and founder and chair of the Sonoma County United in Kindness Project, which was formed in March 2019. This project came about after attending too many memorial services in honor of victims of race and hateful acts, locally, nationally, and internationally. One of the United in Kindness's goal, major objective, is to reach out, inform, promote, and unite PICA and city governments in Sonoma County through adopting and committing to sustainable daily acts of kindness in their daily lives and operations. Another important goal of United in Kindness is to work with the schools and students to promote active conversations on race, racism, diversity, inclusivity, tolerance, and respect for others through poetry. We will proudly add the great city of Khatadi to our list of 42 endorsers, while knowing you will promote and apply acts of kindness more vigorously within your area of influence. As a member of society, each one of us have a tremendous obligation to ourselves, children, family, community, and the humanity to actively engage and address inequalities and practice daily kindness acts in our interactions and areas of influence. This is a person-to-person and hard-to-hard work. Each one of us have an important role to play. We got to do it with kindness, until acts of kindness becomes a shared practice of our society. At its simplest form, let us make a pledge, starting now, to commit to two acts of kindness in every interactions and every tasks that we are engaged with during our waking hours. Let us stand up and be instruments of inclusivity, tolerance, equity, and justice, and respect for others, and be the shining light when there is darkness, a beacon of hope when there is despair, and a source of joy when there is sadness. Thank you, the Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, and the distinguished council members, and Lauren Burgess, for your support and leadership in honoring the Sonoma County United in Kindness with your proclamation of support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Jabari.
Liz, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Councilmembers, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name's Liz LaRue, and I've been a resident of Sonoma County for 42 years, and I'm a member of the United in Kindness Campaign Committee. And I wanted to thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Moore, for approving this proclamation, and many thanks to all of the council members for your support of United in Kindness's efforts to achieve a consistent, unified, and proactive statement in support of sustainable acts of kindness countywide. And what perfect timing for you to approve the proclamation during your citywide Love Your Neighbor Week. A special shout out to Vice Mayor Landman for helping us bring this proclamation before the council, and thanks to City Manager Jamie and Obed, and City Clerk Lauren Burgess for your kind assistance. Uh, my friend Mo Jabari has described to you the background of the campaign. Many people think that engaging in acts of kindness is a simple thing to do, but I've come to understand that deep, active, sustained kindness is a radical act. In the aftermath of devastating fires and a flood, the people of Sonoma County witnessed and experienced monumental acts of kindness. Yet we're hitting ourselves, and we're part of the problem if we think that acts of intolerance, hate, and injustice don't occur on a daily basis in Sonoma County. Radical kindness challenges us, challenges us to always, always speak out and fight against injustice rather than remain silent or complacent, and it demands that we hold accountable those who perpetuate injustice, spread hate, or practice intolerance. Radical kindness isn't motivated by self-interest, advancement, or recognition, but with the understanding that it's for the greater good for all of us, for humankind, and it's not always easy. Promoting and sustaining kindness in our actions and in our thoughts and beliefs takes courage, understanding, persistence, resilience, inspiration, listening, and foresight. It takes a lifetime. We need strong, outspoken, proactive leaders who acknowledge, model, participate in, and promote kindness. The United in Kindness campaign has or will be contacting all the Sonoma County City councils with a request to do what you've done tonight. In approving this proclamation, you'll be joining the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors and the Sebastopol and Petaluma City Councils in forging a connection that reaches across city limits towards a united and common goal of promoting and enacting kindness throughout our county. We believe that it's the first time that any community in the U.S. has taken on such a task of standing united in kindness. Thank you again so much for your support for our campaign, the United in Kindness campaign.
Thank you, Liz LaRue, and thank you, Mrs. Jabari. I hope I did ask this to the proclamation, but certainly something that kindness should not be a last word. Thank you for doing that. Any other public comment on that, Ms. Burgess?
No further public comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, now we move on to the third of the final agenda, Mr. Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, there's no proposed changes. And, uh, Mayor, I, I just will point out that, um, uh, your mic level seems a bit low, um, at least in my, on my side. Sounds like everyone's hearing it.
Thank you. As we move on, I'll see what I can do to increase that level.
Yeah, counted a lot, right there, whatever you just did.
I was just being much more assertive. Okay, so we have no changes to the final agenda, and now we move on to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction at the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider, issue, or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-2, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in a full person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in line for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for, may extend the time limit for reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, we will open it up to citizens' business.
As a reminder to our attendees tonight, please use the, uh, raise your hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment, and for those who are dialing in tonight, you can also dial star nine to raise your hand. Mayor Moore, at this time, it appears there's no public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. We move on then to our consent calendar items. Do we have any comments from the council on the consent item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if nobody wishes to pull any item, I'd be happy to move, uh, approve the consent calendar.
I'd be happy to second that.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I did have my hand up.
Is there an item you would like to pull from the consent?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Sounded like you were in a spaceship.
Did this sound any better? All right, Ms. Sparks, I didn't catch that. Do you have an item you'd like to pull?
I have a question, this being my first time with a question on the consent. Can I ask a question about something without pulling it, or is it, would that need to pull it?
Well, you can go ahead and ask the question, if we want to have further dialogue on that, and we might pull that item.
Okay, well, my only question was just about the local hazard mitigation planning agreement. I was curious to know how the public will be able to, uh, get involved with getting input on the hazard mitigation plan sort of earlier on in the process? Does it look, kind of looked like it wasn't, there wasn't going to be any opportunity for public input until, um, phase three, where the plan had already been basically written, and I wondered if there was any opportunity to get some input earlier on?
Mayor Moore, I'd be happy to. Just that, yeah. So, um, uh, Councilmember Sparks, the, um, that is the, um, what you described, I think, is the standard FEMA process. It doesn't preclude earlier public participation if we want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, and we have no further comment, and if that answers your question, Councilmember Sparks? Then we have a motion and a second. We think we have a vote called, Ms. Burgess?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. Thank you very much. As I go. And I move, I'm adding number 10, direction of future, and coming back out. Councilmember Harvey?
I, oh, I'm unmuted. Okay, yes. Um, it doesn't have to be immediate, but I know, um, before all of this stuff happened with the pandemic, we were looking at the disposable food service wear-on polystyrene, um, ordinance, and I would like, um, that to kind of somewhere fit into one of our agendas again, now that we're kind of, um, past a lot of things, and we, um, have, um, some updates, um, to that from some of the other cities. So it's been passed and updated, and there are some capabilities for us to, um, phase it in and put a later date to allow, um, for businesses to, um, kind of go through this that they have. So I would like to see that come back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Harvey. The other, if you can, two, three items, please. So we now move on to our public hearing. And the first one is the adoption of a resolution declaring attention to annex certain property in community facilities, District number 2017-01. I believe on this one, it's going to be, um, actually the manager?
Um, I, yeah, so I'll just, I'll start really quickly, and then Craig Scott will, um, take over for the presentation. Um, but there's a, when we get to the end of this, there's a, um, kind of a specific process and steps that need to be followed, that I think, um, uh, Mr. Scott will be talking about, but I think, um, you should also have sort of the steps outlines. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Shall we go over that now?
Uh, no, I think we can go over it after the presentation, but I just want to make sure that that's handy, because it's a particular sequence of steps to, to, uh, move this on more, if that's what the council chooses to do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott?
If, if I may, there is one line you get to open up the public hearing before the presentation.
Uh, this is the time in place for the public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of certain property in community facilities, District 2017-01. I think please have a staff report.
Yes. Uh, my name's Craig Scott, I'm the Public Works Director, City Engineer, and this item is to annex the, uh, city-owned property that we refer to as Jamie Lane into the community facilities district. Next slide, please. This district has already been formed. It was, um, formed back in 2017. In this, um, map, we see there's an area next to the train station, the Santerana Way proposed apartment, uh, development was the first, um, area, piece of land to be in our CF, Community Facilities District. And then at that time in 2017, the city also identified the future annexation area as being coincident with the city's jurisdictional boundary. That is, so as future areas are proposed for annexation, as long as they're in, within the city of Khatadi, then they are eligible to be annexed into the, the CFD. Next slide, please. So before us tonight, uh, we have the Jamie Lane property. It's, it's owned, currently owned by the city, and, um, it's located there on East Khatadi Avenue, uh, for Ryan Lane, opposite the train station. And it's just about two-thirds of an acre. It is proposed, uh, the city intends to sell this property, and we'll hear about that in another item on tonight's agenda, to the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County for development into a five residential lot subdivision. Uh, but at this time, uh, the city owns it and is going to move ahead with annexing it into the C, or propose, we're proposing to annex it into the CFD, and that is also a condition of approval for the Jamie Lane subdivision. Next slide, please. So that, that prior, um, map, the original map and that prior annexation map both get recorded with the county after tonight's action. The community facilities district is to, uh, have new residential subdivisions, um, pay into, pay, uh, into the cost, offsetting their impact on public services, and these, this is a list of the public services. Back in 2017, the city completed a fiscal analysis study to determine what the impact was, and then also a rate and, um, apportionment study, uh, which determined what level of, uh, what cost, annual cost per housing unit and, uh, multifamily apartment comp, um, unit would, would be their fair share. And these are for police protective services, maintenance. And these are for police protective services, maintenance of park lighting, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, maintenance of related facilities, equipment, vehicle supplies to support that maintenance activity, flood and storm protection services, staff and overhead costs. Next slide. Okay, before we move on, so that footnote there, the costs in fiscal year 2021 were set at $707.32 for single-family residential unit and $471.55 for multifamily unit per year. And this assessment is adjusted by the San Francisco Urban Consumer Cost Index, but, or two percent, but no more than four percent a year. There's a formula that is in the initiating documents that sets what that is. So this, it has been adjusted since its inception in 2017, 2018. Next slide, please. For the timeline, we have the establishment of the CFD. We, subsequent to the Santerana Way proposed apartment complex, which is not being constructed yet, over by the train station, we had the Kessing Ranch, forty-seven plus or minus, unit sub, single-family subdivision annexed in, and we're seeing those homes going in. What's, this would probably be a good time to note that May, May 1st of every year, we gather together all of this building permits that were flagged as being within the CFD, and we send off to the county, the assessor's office, a list of those properties so that they can be added to the assessment rolls. And it's triggered by when the building permit is issued, because it takes that amount of time. So by the time that house is occupied, it's already there on the tax assessment rolls, so it's fully disclosed to that property. And we're not, so the city's not in the imposition, a year later or so after it's already occupied, springing on this surprise additional cost. Okay, and then for this specific annexation, we, the council met last meeting on the January 26th and heard a resolution, or passed a resolution of intent to annex into the CFD, and it's set today as a public hearing date. The city council also, in that action, has the owner of the property requested that the property be annexed, and then approved, being assessed. And so that was an important document to have approval on at the last meeting. And then today, we're holding the public hearing and considering a resolution to annex the Jamie Lane property into the CFD. That concludes the present, no, there's one more slide, I think, which is just the recommendation to conduct the public hearing and adopt, and consider adoption of the resolution. That concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I appreciate that. Are there any questions from any of the council members? Okay, seeing none. Are there any members of the Senate wishing to speak on this particular item?
Mayor Moore, at this time, I see no public comment.
Thank you. There's no further persons wishing to speak on this item. I'll ask the city clerk to revise whether any written protests have been received regarding this matter.
No written protests have been received.
Thank you very much. No written protests have been submitted. I'll now close the public hearing and bring them out of back to the council members for discussion or action. Do we have a motion on this, if there are no further discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
I'd be happy to second that. I wonder if we need to form that, though, in the full recommendation, because there's three parts to it. Councilmember Harvey, would you accept that as amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. As contained in the recommendation? Very good. I'll happily second that.
We have a motion in second. Now for the discussion, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
It looks formal to my liking, but I guess we have to do it in a better way. Okay, now we will move on to public hearing regarding introduction of ordinance to revise the planning commission and planning process to allow for interim continuing service of existing members. And will this be asked of our city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as the mayor had just said, this, this proposed ordinance is recommending a revision to Municipal Code, Chapter 2.16, which governs the appointment process, terms, and removal, basically everything about the planning commission, and by extension, also the Measure G Oversight Committee. He uses the same rules to appoint and remove members. Basically, the short version of this is that that it's very possible that we could have an election cycle where, as everyone here knows, we have three council members up for election, and two alternating every two years. And you could easily have an election cycle where you have three council members that, that leave the council, and you have three new members come on. And how, it is currently written, you could be in a position where the three planning commissioners that were nominated by those three council members would be gone for some period of time, until new members are appointed to replace them, which could potentially delay, delay city business on the planning commission or Measure G Oversight Committee. So attached to this staff report is a simple redline edit that basically adds to the end of Section 2.16.020. This is on packet page 37. A little bit of text that basically says that terms shall begin on the date of the first meeting of the commission after appointment, and shall end upon either removal or ratification of a replacement planning commissioner. So it would basically allow them, any existing planning commission members or Measure G Oversight Committee members, to continue to perform those roles until the new council member selects the replacement for them. And that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Do we have any questions?
Mayor Moore, I do have my hand up. Not a question, but a comment. I think that it's prudent for us to do this because we want to keep the city business going on, and oftentimes, right after an election, it takes council members a little bit to be able to publicize these positions and to go through applications and kind of vet those spokes. And we want to have that continuity to be able to have a fully-staffed planning commission and oversight committee so that the city's business can keep going on. So I think this is prudent for us to add these changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Sparks?
I'd just like to concur. I think this is a great idea, and I agree with Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion on this? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, sorry, I was going to wait till after public comment, but if we're doing discussion now, I, my only concern is the, the potential, we've got a very functional council, but the, I would rather have the term end upon the nomination and presentation to the council of a new nominee. Because I'm worried about in a dysfunctional council sort of situation, if, say I was a new member of council and brought my nominee to the, to the city council, and the rest of the council preferred the existing member, they could just decide not to ratify my, my nominee, and thus leave the existing commissioner on the planning commission. So my preference would be to reword it so that the previous term ends upon the presentation of a new nominee to the council. I'd be interested in hearing from the city attorney whether there are any issues with that approach.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any issues with that approach. I think Damian and I would have to craft some language to address that. Your thought is the term would end when a new council member is sworn in? Is that, is that what you're?
No, when, when a new nominee to the planning commission is nominated as a city council member.
Correct. Gotcha. Okay, and then i- if that person was not appointed by the council or approved by the council, you would have a vacancy at that point.
Right.
And, and that would, that would force the issue. I think that approach could work.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. Vice Mayor Landman?
Well, I hate I've become in the position of becoming the oldest person on the council, so I do the history part. But actually, we did used to have, our planning commissioners were the sole pick of each individual council member, and there was no council ratification. And that was a change that was made some years back, and although at first, being a typical human being and having some resistance to change, I wasn't certain of the idea. I've grown to agree with it, and the thought was, in time, indeed, we do at times have adversarial relations or questions, or this or that. And this was thought of as protection. It required some degree of consensus and some degree of back and forth between everybody, and just a small amount of protection in the case if there was an incredibly problematic nomination put forward. I think in a worst-case scenario, perhaps what Mr. Commissioner Councilmember Ford alludes to could happen, but I would see it as being unlikely. I think more likely, this just gives us an extra card in our pocket to present against worst-case scenarios. So I think we have benefit either way, and I think we could run into problems either way, but I, I wonder if they're not somewhat equal. So in any, I wanted to put that forward. We're at this for a specific reason, because we did look at this some, oh, maybe six, seven years ago, I think, and purposely went in this direction. So, so that's the history. What the group wants to do is fine. I'm comfortable with what we're doing, but I have no problem with going back to how we originally did it either.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I concur with Mark's history lesson on this. I guess part of the problem that we're trying to solve here is to be able to continue the city's business, and we could end up in a situation where nobody's planning commissioners get ratified. And so then, again, we could have a situation where there's three new council members, and no planning commissioners and no planning commission business being able to move forward while that works itself out. So that's my only concern here, is we kind of be back in the position of possibly not having a working planning commissioner or Measure G committee. I don't know if that or not, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Sparks?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Ford's suggestion. And I, just to use our current situation as a, as an example, where I was having tremendous difficulty finding somebody willing to serve. If we made the changes that Councilmember Ford is suggesting, then whoever the old planning commissioner was would have continued to serve up until now, because no nominee would have been presented yet until tonight. So in the event that we were unable to find somebody to fill the position, there would, I like the Councilmember Ford's suggestion, because this, this would fix that. It would only, this would only prevent us from having new people ratified if there were nominees that were coming to the council and, and for some, for some reason, the council wasn't proving that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks? Councilmember Ford?
I just want to clarify, there seemed to be some confusion about what I was suggesting. So I'm, I'm not suggesting going back to what Councilmember Landman, what Vice Mayor Landman mentioned, which is that there's no council ratification of planning commissioners. I'm proposing that in, with the current draft in front of us, what could, what could ensue at a council meeting is, this turns into an election between the existing planning commissioner and the new nominee. That's what, what the current language could lead to. My proposal would remove, on the presentation of a new nominee to the council, the term would end of the outgoing member, and then it would be before the council. Do you approve the new nominee, or do you leave the position vacant until another nominee comes along? So the, the council approval process would be as it is now, rather than switching to, do you, do you like the existing person better than the new member, new member's nominee?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
This will work much better, if I unquote. That helps clarify things, but, but what I heard was, I think we'll run into the same problem that Councilmember Harvey put forward, Councilmember Ford, in that you just said that if the new council member wasn't ratified, but then we would have to wait until a new one came along, and I think that was the idea of avoiding it. It seems we either take a chance, and this could go either way, but I can see that we either take a chance on being in a position where we have business needs to be accomplished, and for us, a certain amount of time, we don't have a quorum on some of our councils. We try and stake our faith in the fact that the council, which has done a decent job mending our differences and generally finding a decent consensus for the last 12, 13 years, will continue to be able to do that. I suspect there would be. Not ratifying a pit is a pretty dramatic direction to take. That's essentially a nuclear strike, in my opinion, politically. And I can't see people doing that in just the most worst-case scenario. And if we truly devolved to that, that will be the least of our problems, I think. So if you can answer me how we avoid that, I might be interested in supporting this. Otherwise, I think we're doing just as well now. So I'm open to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Well, I'll just respond to say, I'm proposing to leave it more like it is now. This proposal in front of us would switch it to a new system. So my, my proposal would do away with the vacant position up until the new nominee, which was the goal of this current proposal. But it would put before the council not a choice between the existing member and the new nominee, but just like it is now, an up or down vote on the, on the new nominee. So I'm proposing something that leaves it more like it is now, that fills the gap between the end of the year and when the new council member finds a nominee. So I'm, I agree it could go either way. Both are very unlikely. It seems to me that putting before the council a choice between the current nominee or a vacant seat really puts the council on the hot seat to come to consensus, as opposed to current member versus new nominee. And then, and we could have a three to two vote, it would essentially leave the, the current member in place over the objections of the appointing council member.
So if I understand you correctly, Councilmember Ford, if we, if one of the council members nominated somebody, and the existing commissioner would retain their position and pull that nomination to the city council.
Right.
And then if the city council did not approve that nomination, then we would be without a planning commissioner, either existing or new.
Right.
So I don't know what that's all.
Well.
Because in one situation, you, now you alienated the existing commissioner, and you have not appointed a new commissioner, now you have fifty of them that might be up there. you have not appointed a new commissioner, now you have fifty of them elected.
So, can I respond a little bit?
You won't necessarily have to.
Sorry, it looks like Councilmember Sparks.
Councilmember Spark?
I'm going to say, it would solve, what I, I believe that Councilmember Ford's suggestion would solve the problem that we are by far the most likely to encounter, which is that we're unable to find somebody who's willing to serve in a timely manner, and we're unable to vet those people in time to get things going. So, this would solve that gap of between when a new person is elected and when they're able to appoint a commissioner without infringing on the right of a new council member to have that choice of who their commissioner would be. It just solves that. I think it does solve, like you said, or somebody said, it's very unlikely for us to have a council not ratify someone, but it is very likely that, because it's happened just now, that we're having trouble filling it in a timely manner. So, I think it would solve the most likely problem that we might encounter.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I guess my concern is that we could end up in a situation where we have three new council members, each with people, and if one doesn't get ratified, for whatever reason, who knows what it is, there could be a situation where then it's like, well, then I'm not going to ratify yours, and I'm not going to ratify yours, and we could end up with three vacancies and not be able to proceed. That, you know, like a tit, I hate to say, a tit for tat. You know, right now, it's generally just one, but we could be in a situation where there's multiples and then do business. That's really my own concern. Either that, or I agree with Vice Mayor Lammon, either that or we have to go back to where we were before, and that's that it's up to that council member with no ratification. That's really the only way around that. I don't think I've seen a situation yet where we haven't ratified. That's not to say that that could never hap. I don't want the city to not be able to do business because we get into this little, well, you didn't ratify mine, so I'm not going to ratify your, you know, kind of situation, as childish as that might be. As Vice Mayor Lammon pointed out, it could get there if it got dysfunctional.
Thank you. I have a question for our city attorney, Vice Mayor Barker. In the event that we have a situation where we could not have a quorum on the planning commission, would those be presented to the council, or does it have to be a...
In a scenario where the code says that the planning commissioner is supposed to hear the item, we could have a scenario where an item is stuck at the planning commission until you have a, until you have a quorum there, but there are mechanisms for the staff to present the items to the council, or even treat the council as the planning agency on a temporary, on a temporary basis, while the, just basically, the council would take over the responsibility of the planning commission on a temporary basis if something like that were to occur. So, there are mechanisms to deal with that kind of scenario.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions from the council, I will open up for the comments. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lammon, you had a question?
No, it can wait, that's fine. Wait till after public comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does not appear we have any public comment. Am I interrupting that, Ms. Burgess?
No public comment at this time.
Okay. I don't see any public comment on this. So, I'll bring it back to the council. I, my personal thoughts on this are that I don't know that it accomplishes a lot, and I do have concerns. Somebody's nominated, but the benefit of the council, the council is not, they're no longer acting, and now we have a rejected nominee, but we still have, now we have a position where we have a vacancy.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a brief comment? I don't know if this is going to be helpful, but I just want to comment on something unique about your code. And that is that the planning commissioners serve, their terms coincide with the terms of the individual council members and are at the discretion of the council member who made the original nomination. So, the council can't remove, the council itself as a body cannot remove commissioners, but the original person that made the appointment can. Once that council member is no longer on the council, there's no person, there's no entity or person that can remove that commissioner. So, that creates a kind of a unique dynamic, and I would, I guess Councilmember Ford's proposal would resolve that problem, but when you have a stalemate situation like Councilmember Ford presented, the council could, that person that was appointed by a prior council member would stay on the council indefinitely, and there would be no mechanism to remove that person. So, I just wanted the council to be aware of that, you know, remote scenario, but it's an oddity created by your code that I just want to make you all aware of.
And if a council member resigns midterm, then that commissioner has the ability to stay on indefinitely?
Hold on, I'm looking.
Because typically with some of the previous transitions, we haven't had that. We have typically haven't had too many issues with the vacant positions. Frank has come up and gone to stay there, but we haven't had many issues with anything to say.
Vice Mayor, you want me to talk to this matter?
Well, the only comment I can make about that is that the code says that the terms of commissioners shall coincide with the terms of the council member who made the original nomination. So, I suppose if a council member resigned or their office became vacant, the code says that the term would end, although the code also acknowledges that the way we're proposing to amend it, that the term would continue until the replacement is appointed.
Or nominated.
Or nominated, depending on the version that's adopted by the council tonight.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Mr. Barker for ruining the master plan, for outing the master plan of many council members to remain in position forever now that this has been made public. We've ruined this, so I have to laugh. I'm glad nothing, I hope nothing happens to me, otherwise Ms. Murphy will be doomed to spend the rest of her life on planning commission. So, with that frightening realization, I looked at Mr. Ford. I think you've heard the concerns. I would encourage you, if you can craft a motion that gets what you want and covers some of these concerns, I bet there's openness just to solve this and move forward, because the good news is, there are a few issues with either way we go. So, the bottom line, I don't think we can lose. If you feel strongly and would like to make a motion, craft something that perhaps encompasses this, we'll see where the votes go and see if we can move forward. That's the best advice I can share to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, if it's helpful, I could suggest some text that Councilmember Ford could consider.
Sure.
So, at the end of 2.16.20, it says, the last sentence says, "Terms shall begin on the date of the first meeting of the commission after appointment and shall end upon the city council's consideration of the nomination of a replacement commissioner pursuant to section 2.16.015."
And, Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, I would like to move that language that the city attorney just read out?
That would be fine.
Consider it done.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, a second?
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Burgess?
Councilmember Harvey.
We don't know, we've lost Ms. Burgess.
Councilmember Harvey?
Can't hear you.
Yeah? Want to go a vote on him?
Yeah, Mayor. Seems to have dropped off. I would, before, actually, before we do a roll call vote, actually, one quick question for the attorney. So, this would be, this proposed language would remove the, either the removal, it's basically contingent on the presentation of a new nominee to the council. Is that correct?
Correct. The current council, or, current commissioner serves until the nominee, a nomination is presented to the city council.
So, can I clarify? So, if the nominating council member wanted to replace his or her existing nominee, the mechanism to do that would be to nominate a replacement?
Correct. Or he or she could remove, under the terms of the code, the council member that appointed a commissioner has a right to remove that person at any time, and you could also do that by presenting a new nomination to the council.
When we have a motion and a second, a little bit more discussion on this, if I could, would it be more efficient if we were to suggest that a council member served, I mean, a commissioner served until a new council member is appointed? Did they not hear me on that one? So, my suggestion, my suggestion regarding discussion on that would be, if we look at that language, to allow for a planning commissioner to continue to serve until that time as the appropriate council member determined they wanted to nominate and get appointed. Whereas we're just having that commissioner not serve after the nomination period.
Is, Mr. Mayor, is your thought that the term would end immediately upon the council maker making the nomination, rather than waiting until it's presented to the city council, that nomination is presented to the city council?
No, it's my position that the term of the commissioner would end upon the ratification of a new council member, not end upon the nomination of a new council member, which is how I understood Councilmember Ford's original position on that.
Well, the way, the language that I drafted indicated that the current commissioner would serve until a new commissioner were nominated and presented to the city council, and at that point, either the council would ratify that nomination of that commissioner, and they would be seated immediately, or if the council did not ratify the nomination, the seat would be immediately vacant.
Councilmember Ford?
Well, Mayor Moore, I think what you're proposing is the city attorney's original language was in the packet, so that's what we're debating, is do we stick with that, where an existing member serves until a new member is ratified by the council? I'm proposing that instead, we switch to a new, existing member serves until the council considers a new nominee, which turns the council vote, like it is now, into an up or down vote on a new nominee, not into a vote between the existing seat holder and the new nominee. So, I'm trying to keep the vote of the city council to be an up or down vote of the council member, the new council member's nominee, not a vote between the existing commissioner and the new nominee.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, that's interesting that you just said that then, because that was my understanding of the whole point of the ratification, is that it's an up or down on who it is that the council member is putting forward. Nothing to do at all with who is ever in that spot at the current time. The current planning commissioner isn't even brought up. It's really what is brought forward is who that council member wants in that position. So, I just feel like this is getting a little bit unclear and complicated, and I think either it is the way it is, or I think we need this to come back. It's just getting too convoluted in my mind.
Mayor, sorry, this is Damian. So, if, obviously, there, I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of good discussion tonight, and if the council so chooses, I would be happy to work with the city attorney and look at some other language from other cities, some council, planning commission appointments, and come back with some, given the context of this discussion tonight, some revised language is another option.
Vice Mayor Lammon, will you?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, we've had good discussion. I think we can see both sides have some pluses and minuses. I will admit, my opinion's gone back and forth several times in this, so it shows that there's good arguments on both sides. Having said that, we have a nomination, or excuse me, we have a motion put forward. If that fails for some reason, we can go to our original motion. I suspect we can resolve this quickly, and however it resolves, I think I'll be satisfied personally. I think we all will, you know? I think we've done our job, and if necessary, if this needs to comes back, that would be fine, but I don't know if we really need to do that. I'll listen to my colleagues on that, but it seems like, I think, we just cast our votes, see where we go, and cattadi will be fine either way, I suspect. So, just my thoughts.
Okay, Mr. Barker, if you'd be kind enough to read what you have on the motion?
I'm not sure I'm going to say it exactly as I said it before, but the last sentence of 2.16.20, 020, would say, "Terms shall begin on the date of the first meeting of the commission after appointment and shall end upon the city council's consideration of a nomination, of the nomination of a replacement commissioner pursuant to section 2.16.015."
So, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Oh, Mayor, I will, Lauren's having some audio issues, so I will just go ahead and do the roll call for you. All right, so Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
No.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
So, all right, so that motion fails 3-2. Do we want to do a motion on the language as is proposed in the packet?
Well, seeing as my microphone's open through the mayor, if I might, I will move an ordinance to revise the planning commission appointment process to allow for interim continuing service of existing members until new members are appointed, as described in the staff appointment.
Have a motion, but we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
No.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 4-1. Thank you.
And, um, I would like to take a minute.
Come here. Yeah, here. Mayor Moore?
Okay, you can hear me off? Okay, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess to fix our technical difficulties and come back in at 8:20. Thank you. We'll sign back on.
Ms. Burgess, are you back on?
Hi, Mayor Moore. Yes, I am.
I can see your...
Your frame highlighted, but I can't hear anything. Okay, I will have to get in touch with Damian.
I can hear you now.
Oh, thank you.
I was gonna say, I can, I can hear Mayor Moore.
Okay.
Oh, then you just heard me muttering to myself. Thank you.
I do it all the time. Is that audio a little bit better?
Much.
Much better. Yeah, I, uh, tried to use another, my PC, and, uh, obviously, it's not the best audio quality on there.
Yes, you sound much, much better.
You recovered quickly from whatever was ailing you.
It kinda sounded like you were underwater, which matched your background image very nicely.
We don't want you to get anything, so I'm glad you were able to recover.
Thank you so much. We'll just give it another minute or so for all those others that we said are 8:20.
And hopefully, we still have more.
Go ahead.
Yay.
I am looking forward to the day when we can have these in person, if ever that comes. Don't say it like that. So, it's 8:20, and if we have all the staff person that we need, we can go ahead and reconvene. Lauren, does it look like we have everybody we need here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And, um, I had a question for, uh, Mr. Barker. Um, we had a, uh, attendee that wanted to speak on an issue but couldn't get in technically. Uh, what's the protocol if we were to open that back up for a public comment on there, even though we already voted?
Well, the action has already been taken, but, um, you could certainly take public comment, uh, after the action's already been taken. I'm not, I'm not sure you could, I do not believe you could go back and undo it. You'd have to renotice it in order to reconsider the item. But, but, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't that clear. You, you could definitely take public comment on the item.
Okay, I will open it back up for public comment. Ms. Burgess, if you would facilitate that.
Yes. Yeah, please, more, go ahead. Hi, um, I just, as a planning commissioner for the city of Katati, I just wanted to weigh in on this item, coming from the other side of my house. Um, so, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. So, I know Steve served for a long time. Steve Oni was, was under Wendy Skillman. And I would have appreciated that he would have stayed on for a while, just because we did have an action item that came through. Um, I don't know if he would have. Uh, and I don't know, in that scenario, if somebody who serves on the planning commission for a very long time would feel obligated to stay for a while, or, or feel, you know, that they have, like you said, an obligation to the city of Katati. But it would have been nice to have him stay just for a little bit longer, um, to be able to, to finish out. And his leaving was just kind of abrupt, especially in this day and age where we're doing it all on Zoom. Um, it's always nice, too, to have every planning commissioner known by their city council. And Steve served for a long time, um, very well-served. So, um, that's just my two cents as a planning commissioner. It's, uh, sometimes we very, have a lot of agenda items, and sometimes we don't. So, um, like I said, it's already been passed, but I just thought you'd, like you know, from somebody who actually sits on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I think that our most recent action, uh, would address that, if I understand that correctly. So, thank you very much. Okay. So now, we look at the next item. Appointment of a planning commissioner. And Mr. Obed, will you be presenting this?
Yes, Mayor, I'll present this. Um, so, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I think now that we're all very well acquainted with chapter 2.16, we're gonna, um, be talking about appointing a planning commission member. And it's, you know, it's kind of funny. I remember last time we had spoken about the same, about the chapter 2.16. It was a very robust, long discussion. It seems like it always elicits a lot of, um, a lot of good feedback and interesting discussions. Because even last time, it was a very long discussion, as I recall. So, um, anyway, so for tonight, uh, Councilmember Sparks has, um, nominated Jonathan Rodriguez to fill the vacant planning commission position. And, um, there, there's currently one vacant position on the planning commission. If, uh, the council, um, if the council ratifies Councilmember Sparks' nomination tonight, the planning commission will have all five members seated. And, um, uh, just as background, we did, um, advertise this, and, um, in fact, had to re-advertise, as, uh, Councilmember Sparks alluded to earlier. And, um, the application from that, um, application process, uh, for Jonathan Rodriguez is attached in the staff report. For that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but I think it's fairly straightforward.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Sparks? Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that, um, Jonathan was, uh, he basically responded to the ad that the city put out. He's extremely enthusiastic about wanting to make a positive difference for his community. Um, I've spoken with him on a couple of occasions, and I feel like he would be a very enthusiastic and, um, good addition to our planning commission.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yeah, I was almost tempted, if our last discussion, just for the heck of it, to vote not to ratify, just to see what happens. But all kidding aside, I just wanted to comment to say, welcome to our new plan, I believe, our new planning commissioner Rodriguez, to thank him, uh, for stepping up to service community. I, I think it's great to see a new face in the community step up. That always helps make the community a better place. And I just wanted to suggest that, when you're new to this, it's a very complex thing. If he has questions, I'm sure any of his colleagues would be happy to spend some time talking with him online to just get a good sense of what's going forward. So, with that, I want to congratulate, uh, him and be happy to support this now. Director's, excuse me, I'm thinking of other places. Councilmember Sparks' nomination.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lammon. Um, is, uh, Mr. Rodriguez in attendance?
Mayor Moore. Mayor Moore, I don't see his name in the list. However, we do have one phone call listener with the last four of 1-0-6-1. Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez, say yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, and good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming me, and, um, I'm very, very excited to be a part of this planning commission and hopefully, um, bring some positive change and some, you know, positive energy.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
When you talk about positive change and positive energy, what, what are you envisioning that as?
Um, I'd like to see more, um, affordable housing, um, and be able to welcome, um, anybody that wants to come and live in Sonoma County, especially Katati. It's a wonderful, small city, um, filled with a lot of wonderful people, and, uh, I moved up to Sonoma County from Marin about nine years ago, and Katati was the first place I lived. Uh, and I moved around a little bit in Sonoma County. And back in 2018, I came back to Katati, and I just love it. Uh, everybody's so friendly. Um, and I love downtown. Everybody comes together, and I love all the events. And I think that, that brings a lot of, um, positivity to the community, and it's very welcoming.
And, um, you have not necessarily served on any previous civic organizations or anything like that in your past?
I have not.
Okay, the reason I ask these questions is I think that the planning commission is a very important role that's played in the city. Um, I typically like to see people in there that have had some previous engagement and understand what the commitment may be on that. And, and so that's, that's where some of my questions were coming from on that. Ms. Sparks?
It does state that, um, when I was speaking to, um, Mr. Rodriguez in the past, um, he expressed that he's been involved with, um, he- he expressed that he's been involved with homeowners association boards in the past, is very familiar with the workings of long technical meetings, and understands what that entails, and that made me really feel comfortable appointing him.
Thank you so much. Any further questions or comments? If not, then I will go ahead and open this up to further public comment. Anyone has any further comment on there?
As a reminder to our attendees, you dial star nine if you're dialing in, or use your raise hand icon. Mayor Moore, at this time, we see no public comment.
Thank you so much. With no further discussion, I would be looking for a motion on this.
I would like to move to ratify the nomination of Councilmember Sparks, Jonathan Rodriguez, to planning commission.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to second that unless Councilmember Sparks would refer to be the second.
You can go right ahead. Thank you so much.
In that case, I'll be happy to second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Spark. Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No. And I caveat that no vote with, I would just like to, for future reference, see a little bit more engagement and involvement in the community for the planning commission, but I do appreciate the effort of Mr. Rodriguez to submit his name for that, and I welcome him on to the planning commission. So thank you. Okay. And now we will move on to information update and presentation of the final design for the City of Cattati Gateway Sign Program.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. This is Noah House, Chief Director for the City of Cattati. I just want to give a brief introduction. As identified, this is an informational presentation to the council. No decisions will be made this evening, however, we will welcome your input. The Gateway Sign Project is an extension of the Wayfinding Sign Project, which grew out of policies in the general plan and the bike and pedestrian master plan. And I would welcome John Bosio, our sign consultant for both of these projects, to conduct a presentation. He's from Merge. And he has been asked to provide the informational update to the city council as we move forward in the design process towards finalizing and making a decision. And with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Presenting from Pennsylvania.
Yes. You can go to the next slide. So thank you all for having me tonight. Again, this is John Bosio from Merge. For those who are not familiar with the work we've been doing in Cattati over the past several years, we designed and planned the wayfinding sign, bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding system we see along the trails. This project sort of becomes sort of an extension of that. That project also has a second phase coming with some kiosk elements that we've been working with Noah and his group on as well. So we were asked to then sort of extend that project into the gateway program. And that's what we've been working on. That previous project had a lot of public input that led to that design. And we've tried to bring some of those elements into this as well. I'll talk a little bit about materials and that sort of thing as we get into it. Go to the next slide. So there are, as we looked at sort of locations, and I'm just gonna sort of go through that real briefly, there were five sort of major or primary locations for gateway elements. And then we can see there numbered one through five, and you see little red dots. There are another four or five locations that are sort of secondary ways into town that will get sort of more of a simple sort of post and panel sign. You'll see that as we go through it. If you could flip through each one. Each location gives a little bit of a different sort of environment clearance, right-of-way that we've had a look at. So when you see the designs, we've developed three different sizes and configurations. And then based on what is available at that particular spot, we will, you know, install the appropriate sign or decide on what the appropriate sign size should be there. So this is the number one location, which is along Highway 116. Go to the next slide. This is along Commerce Boulevard. It's not gonna be a wall. That was just sort of the area which is available there. There's also now, there's a, I think there's a trailhead sign and some other trail sign that sort of identify that portion. I'll go to the next one slide. This is along West Sierra and Pine Lane. Go to the next one. Old Redwood Boulevard and Eucalyptus Avenue. So there were just some different areas there that something could fit. Then the last one. There's an existing sign here on East Cattati and at Sunflower Drive. So these are the locations we're looking at. Wasn't for pandemic, I probably would be out there site checking right now. So that's sort of one of our next steps as we go through this. But just based on that information that we gathered, we started to put together some design elements for that. I should mention that we have been trying to coordinate with the branding effort that was going on as well. I'll talk a little bit about that. We've designed the system flexible enough that as that moves forward, there's opportunity to add that to the system, and you'll see that as we go through it. The next slide. We've introduced a new, another material into the overall design. We did try to keep with the the overall sort of trail materials, but I know when we did the trail project with the public input, there was some desire to have Corten, like Corten metal steel incorporated. With the trail signs, it was very limited sign types, so that opportunity didn't present itself as much. But we did try to bring that into the gateways, which you'll see in a moment. There is stonework that we're incorporating into, that we're into the trails that we're bringing into this as well, and different options. So there's three options. Go to the next slide. This is option A. And in all three options, you will see three different sort of configurations. There's the first, you know, go to the next slide, you could zoom in there. You'll see the first configuration on the left is where we have enough sort of horizontal clearance to do, to have a horizontal type sign. The typeface that we're using there is the typeface that was working, sort of working typeface for the brand identity. The second version there is a vertical version, when we have very limited room. And the third size is on the sort of secondary area where we have really minimal amount of room to include a sign. You'll see on all the options, that last one, that configuration is similar to the configuration we did for the parking lot signs. That double post with the panel on it, that seemed to be a real favorable sort of configuration, so we've incorporated that on most of those smaller panels. The material here would be the Corten steel and with the letters cut out. And then we've incorporated the stonework similar to what we have on the trail system. You'll see on this also, which are sort of questions we're still putting out there, is it says Cattati, California. You'll see on the next one, it just says, "Welcome." You could put an established date. If there's other messaging, you know, you don't have to put California. If there's other messaging that we want to establish on there, there are certainly discussions that we'll continue to have. But this was three panels, sort of metal horizontal panels with the letters cut out above. We were trying to keep everything sort of very natural, material, timeless, simple, not getting caught up in sort of over-stylizing it. Go to the next one. This is option two, and you can even go to the next slide to zoom in there. This one has, again, stonework on it. We're bringing in some wood to match the, similar to what we utilized on the trail system. In this case, the Cattati letters are really thick letters, some real substance to them, and then the returns of those letters would be painted green. And then the Corten just acts as a backdrop to the signs, to the letters. So those letters are really pop, the white against the darker background. And then we have the word "we welcome," we just included "welcome" on that. And then you see the smaller-sized panel, again, is that configuration from the parking lot signs. In all these cases, you can see that Cattati ends up with a mark, say a contained mark inside a hexagon, which I think is sort of the predominant shape. We've always left room on the signs that that could be added, because we've been sort of out in front of that effort and trying to keep moving along, but at the same time realizing that we may have to add something to that. So in both the first one and this one, there's an opportunity to add that back on, and even that last sign, there's opportunity up in the upper portion of it to add a logo. You go to the third option? So this is option C. Option C brings in a little bit more of the metalwork that we had in the trail system, so we're sort of repeating that language. You know, we always saw the gateways in the trail system. I think in the first two, it's sort of, I would say it's its first cousin, and this one is sort of a brother-sister version. As you can see, the picture's at the top, it has, it brings in that color palette. So you have a much more consistent graphic language across signage in town. You could go into the next slide. Zoom in there. Again, stonework, bringing in the wood accent, again, the dimensional letters with the word "Cattati," trying to get that as large as we can. And then the metal pattern that we, that you see in the trailhead signage is another element that we've, that metalwork that we've brought in to it. Then the last sign, I don't think that PDF is shown quite right, but there's the pattern drops back behind the word "Cattati." So there are the three options that we've been working with. We had some different versions prior to this, and they've all been tweaked down to these three. And we felt like it was a good time to start to get feedback from the council on these. We've always gotten really good feedback in Cattati on all the design work that we've done. And our next steps are to take that, sort of land on a, you know, vet out some of the comments and land on the final design, and then look at each of the locations and decide what the sizes and configurations may be. They may have to get adjusted based on real-world conditions. So with that, I guess we'll take any questions. Noah, if you want to add anything to that?
I don't really have anything to add. I would just say, you know, we really asked John to build on all the feedback and input that was gathered through the Wayfinding Sign Committee and all the public engagement that previously went into this effort, which all occurred prior to my coming to the city. And so the whole goal was just to build on that, incorporate some of the elements of the branding work that's been done, but allow him to move forward with getting a second phase, so to speak, of this sign effort to kind of wrap it up as we head into the next fiscal year. And so we wanted to show those to the council, the community, and allow folks to start to provide some feedback on these designs as they get finalized.
Thank you, Mr. House. Thank you, Mr. Bosio.
Yes.
For your presentation on that. With that information, I'll bring it back to the council and see if they have any comments or questions.
I do, Mayor Moore.
Councilmember Ford, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll say comments till after public comment, but I just wanted to ask about the process, Director House, as you see it is. So is this the, there's not an equivalent to the Wayfinding Committee that's helping with this project, right? So this is, this is the one opportunity for elected body feedback, or is the planning commission looking at it? What, kind of what's the process? And is there like a survey to get public feedback, or?
You are correct. There is not another Wayfinding Sign Committee, and so we were hoping to, there was an extensive amount of input that was gathered through that process. And so we were hoping, given the constraints of today, to leverage that input into these designs, which is what Mr. Bosio has done for us. We have not considered going back out with a survey or any of those efforts, however. Anything that we want to hear from the council tonight on kind of suggested ways that we should work to select the final design. And then also, any members of the public who are participating, we'd love to hear back, feedback from them as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for asking that question about feedback. I think it might be helpful to get some form of feedback, be that, you know, some kind of poll on our website or something like that, just to, you know, see if people lean one way or another, kind of open to all of them. But I'm just, you know, one of many, many people, so I would like to hear from folks. Secondly, I'm hoping that when they install these, that someone will take care to make sure that they're level and standing upright. I know that we have some of our, I see Vice Mayor Landman shaking his head, we have some that, from the previous wayfinding, that they're just not straight. And so I'm hoping that someone will take care with a level to make sure that they're standing upright, because that's a little disappointing to have a beautiful new sign and have it not be leveled. And then, thirdly, I did not see listed, and it was kind of small, so I couldn't really tell. There is also a City of Cattati, entering City of Cattati sign on Cypress, and the poor thing is probably close to 100 years old, and you can barely see that there's anything on it. So I'm hoping that that also gets on the list, because it's looking pretty shabby. And that's all my questions at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, Vice Mayor Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm surprised how many years have passed since we began this process. I believe I was actually mayor, because I do remember the meetings. And we had numerous meetings. We had robust public meetings with really a good amount of attendance, and most importantly, a lot of participation. And I wanted to share that. I believe Mr. Ford might have been there, if memory serves. I know Ms. Sparks wasn't. So I wanted them just to have a sense that, and anybody who's listening, one of the things we did is we went, we didn't sit up at the council. We all went and sat together as a group in the audience. And we went through every design element, and we had multiple different iterations, and all the different potential sizes. And that included these gateway signs as well. So what you see tonight is kind of the final outgrowth of what they presented us, suggestions that came from the community, that they took back and iterated one more time, brought to us again, and they took even more direction and brought back this, in theory, last time. So that was the background process. It was very thorough and, I think, had some pretty sufficient input from the public. Having said that, anything to do with art or design, you'll never find consensus, I know that. So I have comments, I have my comments prepared this, but I'll wait certainly to have the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? I do have a question for Mr. Bosio. On that third slide, you indicated that you thought that those, that style was closest to the existing styles that we have implemented recently. Is that correct?
That one does have the, we brought in the color green. That was, so it has a little bit more color in it. It also has the blue color, where the pre, the option A and B rely a little bit more on material. So, you know, they still fit within the overall family, but with the use of color, I thought that it sort of matches it even more.
Thank you. So at this point, it's an advisement. If we have no further questions from the council or staff or Mr. Bosio, I will open it up for public comment if there's anyone interested in commenting on this.
Marjorie Krupsher, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am, I'm strongly in favor of getting more public comment. And I have a personal favorite of the examples that we were shown. I really liked the third design very much. But I, I'm thinking that this would be a great way to involve the community once again. Perhaps having an announcement on the board outside the fire hall and then using our park as a place where people can come and look at the designs and cast their vote. So I'm all for doing that. And I'll put a personal pitch in for the third design early. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krupshires.
Kimberly Moffett, go ahead.
Ms. Moffett, you have your hand raised, and it looks like you're on mute.
Then you didn't hear anything that I just said. It was amazing, I promise. So, sorry about that. What I wanted to say is I also agree that public surveys would be wonderful. I think that you have done an amazing job at doing the housing surveys recently through Facebook and online. And I'm going to go ahead and throw in my vote for Option 1. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's not a question? Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council on this. Vice Mayor Landman?
All right, yeah, real quickly, let's just go through and give the feedback that was requested by staff. First of all, like all the designs, they essentially are iterations of things that most of the public liked. With that, I have some favorites. I like number one and two personally the best. I lean personally towards number one. I find it clean, simple. I suspect number two might be slightly better for, I remember many people in Katati didn't lean as strongly as I did to clean, modern lines, so I have to keep that in mind. So I would be happy with either number one or two. As I mentioned for number one, I like that it's clean and simple. I would prefer to see "Welcome" instead of "California" because I think that's a wonderful thing to have on our entry signs. I really like that in the other ones. Number two, it's very good, maybe a little blocky, but it does kind of match what we have. And it does have a little bit of the green to it in a few places, which does tie it in with our trail stuff. Number three, I worry, I like the palette very much, but I think the design's really, really busy. I suspect it would look dated perhaps quickly. I'm not sure how the metalwork really works out. And I'm not sure if the metal, the design, bringing in that hex shape in the back of the post and panel gateway really works ideally. So I think the other two signs are simpler, clear, and reminded me more, a little bit more of what I heard from the rest of the public. So personally, I love number one. Number two may be best, and I'd be happy to see either of them. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford?
First of all, I think I agree with Vice Mayor Landman that this is part of the wayfinding project, which included really extensive public involvement and workshops back when we could do that kind of thing. So my, so while I think that perhaps a survey akin to the housing surveys might be a really good move here to invite people to give both, you know, votes, but also some open commentary to comment on the aspects that they like and don't like would be a good opportunity. I'm not interested in recreating the wayfinding sign program because we, we did that and it was a ton of work. So I'd love it if you could come up with some process for people to have some input on these specific signs, but not try to recreate that program. On the aesthetics of the designs, I, I like all the designs fine. I'm worried that the color palette of number three at that scale is too much of those colors. Those are great on the, on the trail signs. There's small bits of those colors, but that's a lot of those colors we need to scale them up to 10-foot-long signs or whatever. And the only other, oh, I agree with Vice Mayor Landman about "Welcome" as opposed to "California." People get here and don't know they're in California, we're in trouble. But we want them to know they're welcome. And the only other thing that I have real concerns about is the lowercase font on one and three that come across as cutesy, and I really worry that'll get dated fast. I know it's a current design fad, but I don't, it doesn't, it's not representative of the other wayfinding signs. And it, and I'm, so I worry about that piece. Thanks.
Just as a comment, the typeface on Option 2, which is the lowercase, they were, that was the typeface that some of the early branding included. So that's why it was there. And then Option 1, we didn't use it. We just have all uppercase. That's working.
Option B is the uppercase. A and C are the lowercase.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the input. It's interesting because in Option 3 on the presentation, it looks different than the printed versions that we got in, in our packets. The colors seem to blend in a little bit more in the printed version. On the version in the presentation, it seems like Katati gets lost in there. So it's a little bit hard for me to determine, you know, what the final sign would actually look like if we went with that. It did feel a little bit busy. I kind of liked the varying colors in there. And the reason that I preferred Option 1 over 2 is that there was a little bit more color in Option 1. At least in the tall signs, it added the green color. And I, and I thought that kind of brought that in. I was not as concerned with the lowercase. I, I kind of thought it was really very simple and liked that. But I also think that it would be worthwhile to put out some kind of, these are our finals, and get a little bit of feedback. I know there's been a lot, but since we're down to the very last step, just even if it, you know, people will feel like they have a little bit of buy-in to it, if you will, if, if they get, you know, one last chance at voting, if you will, on what the final is. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. I do have a question. Can we go back to that last slide that did show the color palette differential on Option 3? And that's the one you were referring to, Councilmember Harvey, that you thought the colors were a little bit more vivid on there or?
Yeah, it seems like on that, that the, what you're seeing is the white popping out versus in the, in the, in the printed version, that white isn't popping out. You're really seeing, you know, more of the green and the, the kind of hexagons are kind of muted, if you will. And, and that's what I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me, especially in that third sign.
Yeah, I think sometimes on the screen, when you make it a PDF, it sometimes plays with the line weights. And I think probably with your printout, which is a little bit more legible, is probably more accurate than what we originally had.
Yeah, because I, I think that that, in the one in the printout, you can see Katati a lot better. In this particular one, Katati gets lost.
Yeah, we recognize that that wouldn't be a good, that wouldn't be a good. I think it just has to do with the PDF.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Sparks, did you want to weigh in on this or?
I think it would be a great idea to do. Everything I would say has been said already. But, um, yeah, just to have the public have one last opportunity to buy in by casting their vote, I think would be a really neat thing. And I like all of the designs, and I have a terrible eye for designs, so I'm not the right person to ask.
Thank you very much. So it sounds like there's been a couple of suggestions that potentially, Noah, if we could do something along the lines of a, oh, I don't know, a 10-day window on the website, on our city website maybe, and on Facebook to allow people to vote on that. I don't know what kind of a timeframe you're looking at, Mr. Bosio, where we would implement these?
We don't have a specific timeframe. I think we're working on budgets that you would then get into your budget cycle, figure out which, you know, how you're going to move forward. So I, we can put together the survey now and give you a Survey Monkey link. And then you can post that on the website for 10 days, and I think that would be just fine.
Mr. House, are you okay with that?
Absolutely. I was just going to provide a little brief summary of what I heard. Everyone very much appreciates the past process, but also there's an expectation that we go out, go back out to give the community one more chance now that we've kind of finalized that they coalesce around some designs. There seems to be kind of some strong counsel leaning towards number one and two, but no, obviously decisions were made. And I really appreciate your all flexibility in not trying to get five people to decide on one design. And then there's some direction to just watch the quality as we move forward with installation, making sure that those inspections are done and, and that they're not signed off until everything meets the standards. And generally, folks definitely don't need California on the Katati sign. So "Welcome" is the preferred.
And don't forget Cypress.
Thank you. Thank you. I noted that.
Councilmember Sparks?
I was going to say, don't forget Cypress.
Well, it sounds like we have a consensus on that, and that's given you enough direction, Mr. House. Terrific. And, yeah, I wouldn't keep that open too long on that website because otherwise, you know, you'll have way more opinion than we can imagine based on the information that's already been presented way back. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Bosio.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we would move on to our regular agenda item on the consideration of a resolution to approve a transfer agreement and escrow instructions directed to transfer of .67 acre city-owned Jamie Lane. Is that you, Mr. House?
It is Mayor Moore. Thank you, sir, and Councilmember first. Just to be really brief, I don't have a PowerPoint or anything for this one. You all have heard a lot about Jamie Lane recently. But as identified the resolution before the council, would formally approve transferring the Jamie Lane property, which is a .67 acre city-owned lot to the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County, and also provide instructions for that transfer to occur. Just briefly, in 2009, the property was purchased through redevelopment funds expressly for the intention of affordable housing. It was purchased for $275,000. And in 2010, the city entered into a negotiation, negotiation agreement with the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County to develop the property and allocated some funding to, to essentially seed money to allow them to move forward with beginning that process. In June of 2020, the council approved subdivision of the property into five lots to develop them with single-family homes, deed restricted to moderate income levels or below. And we also, the council also included a local preference policy. So look for that in other affordable housing agreements moving forward. We will be incorporating that, or at least recommending that the council incorporate that. And then in December of 2020, the council approved the Affordable Housing, Affordability Agreement, and locking in those two things that I just mentioned. And through all of these past actions, there's never been a formal direction from the council approving the transfer of the property to the Housing Land Trust. So it was always implied, it was always understood, but never had formal direction been granted through an action to the city staff to, to move forward with that. And so this item is essentially just doing that. As well as because of the relatively complicated recordation process for all of the agreements, the escrow instructions are included in that agreement. And we thank the city attorney's office for their assistance and expertise in providing that together. So given that, it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution to transmit the, or transfer the Jamie Lane property to the Housing Land Trust, allowing staff to have the final, approving the agreement in form, allowing staff to move forward with the any minor modifications that need to occur as the various legal, legal bodies provide their comments, and city manager would be staff tasked with that authority. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. House. Do we have any questions from the council? Doesn't look like I see any questions at this point. From 2004 to 2020, I don't know why we're in such a rush on this. With that in mind, and this is an action item, so I will open this up to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees and those that are calling in, please dial *9. Otherwise, use your raise hand icon. And Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. With that in mind, and no further discussion on this, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mayor Moore, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the transfer agreement and escrow instructions to direct the transfer of .67 acres of city-owned Jamie Lane property to the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County for the development of five affordable, single-family homes. Yay!
And I would be happy to second that, Mayor Moore.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Let the record reflect, it's a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. House.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, I wanted to suggest a change to the agenda for tonight that just occurred to me. I noticed, looking at our participants, we have a number of people waiting to participate on item 12E. I suspect if we were to move 12E before 12D, this would allow them to make their case and then sign off to allow us to do our deliberations. And seeing as their public officials will already attend in numerous Zoom meetings, if we can make this shorter for them, I think that would be a valuable thing to do.
Well, you're certainly much kinder than me, Vice Mayor Landman. I figure if they want, I figure if they want these appointments, they're used to waiting.
Whatever things passed, I wanted to suggest it.
I would not have a problem with that. If we have a second on that to change that agenda order?
I second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to change the agenda order. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
I suppose, yes. Thank you. So with that in mind, we'll move on to our regular agenda item on the nomination for regional commissions and committees on behalf of Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association and City Select Committee. Mr. Obed, were you going to facilitate this or?
Yes, Mayor. And I believe we have a presentation due. I wonder if you can put that up. But just to get going here, as way of background, I think everyone knows this, but the City of Katati is a member of both the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association, as well as the Sonoma County City Selection Committee. The mayors of each community serve on the board for the Mayors and Councilmembers Association and also on the City Selection Committee. So the process tonight is to, is, and I, I should say, both of these bodies appoint certain members to regional, regional groups, such as, you know, the Bay, as you see in the packet, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and so forth. There's a variety of regional appointments that happen through these two bodies. And the process tonight is really to give the mayor direction as the primary voting delegate of both of these bodies. That would also be true of the vice mayor as the alternative who can hear with Sonoma County, available to meet in February 11th, the nominee for these nominees to be voted on. So Lauren, can you turn to the next slide, please? I just covered- on. So Lauren, can you turn to the next slide, please? I just covered this. Next slide, please. So basically, what you're doing tonight is you're giving the mayor by motion direction on how to vote. And Lauren, next slide, please. All right, so here's the summary. You'll notice, and you probably noticed in the packet before the meeting, that a lot of these, a lot of these positions that are up for vacancies or vacancies being replaced, a lot of them are just one position, one nominee. So, you know, I would suggest, as we kind of go through this, this table might be a good guide. And there's two of these, I think, two of these. This is for the City Selection Committee. There's a separate one for the Mayors and Council Members Association. And my suggestion is just to probably focus on the ones where there's only one position and more than one nominee interested in serving. So for the City Selection Committee, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is one position, one nominee. Golden Gate Bridge District has one position and two nominees interested. LAFCO is one, and our own Mark Lammon is the nominee for that one. MTC has one position, but four people interested in filling that position. Nothing for the RAN Board, and nothing for the Sonoma County Oversight Board Committee. So at least for the City Selection Committee, the two, the two regional bodies that have more interest in positions are the Golden Gate Transit, or I'm sorry, Golden Gate Bridge District and MTC. So my suggestion is we just start with those two, unless there's an interest in talking about the ones where there's one position, one nominee, but I think those are probably straightforward.
I think Mr. Obed will go with your suggestion at this point. And Councilmember Harvey?
Have to unmute first. I just want to point out that on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and I think we got hung up on this at mayors and council members last time, that three names are submitted by the City Selection Committee, and I think we got messed up last time because we, some of the cities went ahead and submitted three, and then the City Selection Committee dealt with it, and some cities only did one, and there was a lot of, you know, kind of things that happened during that. So my suggestion on that one would be for us to send three and rank them, but that's just my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Any other comment regarding this from the council?
Just Councilmember Ford, I just wanted to ask about the order of taking public comment and council discussion and how you're going to handle that.
That's interesting, because we haven't even really discussed each one. But we can discuss what we would like to present and then bring it to public comment, or in this particular case, we might open up comment if there are any of these candidates there that would like to make some sort of a presentation. I would be open to that as well.
Yes, to the mayor, I'd like to suggest going with your latter suggestion, Mr. Mayor. We have people here who'd like to very quickly make the case for these positions. We could allow them to do that. Typically, people do show up and do that, and then they could go back to their evenings, and we could deliberate afterwards. So that might be probably the best and most typical course of action. And then, of course, open it to full public comment afterwards as well.
Thank you. I don't recollect having this many candidates present at previous meetings when we've made these suggestions, so I think it's kind of interesting. But I will go ahead and open it up to the public for any of the candidates that would like to make a comment at this point.
Mayor Dominic Fopoli, go ahead.
Mayor Landman, Vice Mayor, oh, sorry. Wow, Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Landman, and Councils Dominic Fopoli, Mayor of Windsor, and the current Chair of Mayors and Council Members. So I'm coming today to ask for your support. I've tried to reach out to all of you at some point. Quick reasons why I think I'd be a great fit for Sonoma County. I will hit the ground running. I have strong relationships already with the directors from Sonoma, Marin, and San Francisco, so I think that's going to be important as far as making sure our voice is heard. So secondly, my kind of big priority here is I want to make sure that we still have a strong, funded, well-functioning transportation system with Golden Gate. So I think the big one for us is the, our young fledgling smart train system is already having issues because of this year, and I think it's really important that we continue to have a strong ferry connection so that usage will continue to increase. And that's obviously in addition, also supporting the bus system and dealing with ongoing financial challenges that the district will see in the next couple of years. So I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Susan Adams, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the members of the council for moving this up. Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Landman, members of the city council. I speak to this public comment to ask for your support for my application to serve in the member position on the Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Board, representing the Sonoma County mayors and council members. As you're probably aware, since 1969, the state of California has required each local government to plan for its share of the state's housing needs for people of all income levels. Through the regional housing needs allocation process, every local jurisdiction in the Bay Area is assigned a number of housing units representing its share of the state's housing needs for an eight-year period. The California Department of Housing and Community Development identifies the total number of homes for each region of California, the ones that they must plan for in order to meet the housing needs of the people at all income levels. The total number of housing units from HCD is separated into four income categories: very low income, low income, all the way up to market housing rate. And ABAG is responsible for developing that methodology. That's a committee that I've been sitting on. Bay Area Municipalities are responsible for planning, zoning, and approving a combined 441,176 new homes between 2023 and 2030. And just to give you a little perspective, that's up from 135, that's up 135% required during the same Rita period that covered from 2015 to 2022. In September 2020, after a year of meetings, the Housing Methodology Committee proposed a methodology referred to as Option A, High Opportunity Areas, and Emphasis Job Proximity to the ABAG Executive Board. As I mentioned in my application letter and when speaking to all of you, I served on the Rona Park Planning Commission for 14 years, five terms as the chair. Prior to being elected to the city council in 2018, I began serving on the ABAG Planning Commission in the spring of 2019, and was soon appointed by the county to serve on the Housing Methodology Committee. In conclusion, if I'm appointed to represent Sonoma County mayors and council members, I promise to remember that I represent the people in the cities and towns of Sonoma County to ABAG, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Arielle Kelly, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Moore and Vice Mayor Landman, members of the Cattati City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Arielle Kelly, and I am a city council member for the city of Healdsburg to the north. I am seeking the appointment to, as the member position, to the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG Executive Committee. While I am a new council member, I am not new to this role or land use planning. Prior to being on council, I served as a Sonoma County Planning Commissioner. And as you know, we oversee planning and land use decisions countywide, including honoring the urban growth boundaries and making sure that our land use and housing planning for the county is in conjunction with the goals and objectives of each of the nine cities. I'm a land use attorney. I have practiced law, and I've worked in San Francisco in regional planning efforts, actually, since I staffed the ABAG back in 2003 when I was in law school. So my experience and time in working in housing planning and the important balance between jobs, economic development, transit, and housing is really critical in how we look to plan for the future of our region. I am a mom of a five-year-old and a seven-year-old, so I think about the future and our land use often, and I think about the balance that we need to strike in terms of where we build housing and how we do it in a way that is both environmentally conscious, that we're not building housing where we don't have jobs, and we're not building housing where we don't have transit, because it's going to lead to a negative quality of life for those folks with housing that they have to then get in cars to drive long distances for jobs. And so I think it's really important that we look holistically at planning. As a council member representing a small city, I understand that not everyone has the same goals and objectives in terms of growth, and I think we need to be mindful of that while also knowing that we are looking at massive growth across the Bay Area, and I'm excited and eager to play a leading role in that. I have a number of longstanding relationships with members of the ABAG Executive Committee, and will be able to hit the ground running and leverage those relationships to make sure that Sonoma County has a voice at the table, and that I will be open and accessible for all of you, and a strong communicator back to make sure that you know what's happening with ABAG and that there are no surprises like what happened to us last week at a midnight meeting of ABAG when both Windsor and Healdsburg were blindsided by a last-minute decision that we were completely unaware of, that ABAG was making that would be drastically impacting our cities. So I just want you to know that I would be a voice for Cattati as well as the rest of the county, and would be eager to have your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly.
Thanks, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Cloverdale? Oh, thank you. All right. Well, good evening. I think you have received my letter that I submitted earlier today for public comment, and so I'm not going to go on too long, but I did submit it, just not being aware of how long your meeting might go tonight. I am requesting reappointment to AG and Open Space, where I've served for the last four years. For some of you on the council know, I've been very active on that committee on behalf of city, all cities, and we now have a new voting system that I helped implement through the Board of Supervisors for matching grants that impact urban parks and benefit us all. I'm also asking for appointment tonight for, and your support behind me, going to the Board of Supervisors for MTC. It's something that I've been interested in very actively for the last two years. As you, many of you know, Sebastopol and Sonoma are the two cities that cannot serve on the Smart Board, and as an active commuter, I feel very strongly about a lot of transportation issues that are faced by the nine Bay Area counties. I also went for this appointment two years ago during the CASA debate, and fortunately, I was not appointed at that time, so this isn't something I just decided to do a few months ago, but something I've been working on for a number of years. I really appreciate having Cattati's full support as another small city, and would just let you know that I would work with all our elected representatives to bring home money to our county, and also I have an open-door policy. I've reached out to many of you on the council about this appointment and my passion about it, and you know that the door swings both ways. You can always call me with any concerns or how I can speak on your behalf if I were appointed to this position. So thanks for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hen. Do we have any other comments from the public at this time?
Mayor Moore, that ends the public comment.
Thank you. I will bring it back to the council, and then upon our conversations, I can open it back up to the public. So any questions or direction that the council would like to proceed with?
Are you going to go down each item?
I thought we might do that and take each one one at a time, and we can, I think we can start with the easiest. So do we have any direction on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, other than Ms. Barrett from Pittlin?
I think that Ms. Barrett will do a fine job for us.
Okay. And then I did have a question for Mr. Barker, I guess. Once we come to a consensus on these particular positions, I guess I'm obligated to vote that way?
I think it depends on what the particular statute says. Typically, these responsibilities are given to the mayor. Some of them are given to the mayor directly, so, you know, you could exercise your independent judgment, but if the city council gave you direction, you'd have to be doing that at your own peril, I suppose.
I just guess in light of the Electoral College, I just wanted to make sure where I was able to go and not go on there. Okay, so we have Ms. Barrett for the Bay Area Air Quality. The other single appointment on that particular city selection committee is for the local agency formation. We have one position, Councilman Vice Mayor Landman. Any objection to this?
I have no objections. I think it'll be good that he'll finally get an actual commission seat rather than an alternate seat. I think he's done an excellent job. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Landman. You've done a great job for us and have been waiting very patiently to finally make it to the big table.
It's actually been a wonderful process. I have been an alternate city representative for 10 years, but LAFCO is really a pretty wonderful little organization in that they have structured this in a way that alternates are treated very close to regular sitting members. You sit at the kids' table, as we like to call it, but you're allowed to speak, participate in deliberations, and sometimes as an alternate, if you choose your words right and have the right timing, you can actually move the discussion. The only caveat is of course you're not allowed to vote. So that has been a very rewarding experience, but yes, I'm looking forward to it and would like very much to spend my last few years in LAFCO, sitting as a full sitting representative for all of you.
I think that Vice Mayor Landman should get to go to the adult table.
Thank you. Hearing no objection, we will go with Vice Mayor Landman. And that's it on the single ones for the City Selection Committee appointments. Let's go back to the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, two-year term, two candidates, Mr. Fopoli and Mr. Gudice. Any comments or suggestions regarding those?
I would like to recommend that we go with Dominic Fopoli.
And I'll chime in to say, from the two letters, I was, I thought that Mayor Fopoli made a stronger case for his commitment to the responsibilities of the Highway and Transportation District, so I'd also support that.
Through the chair, if I might?
Absolutely.
I have been contacted by both members, both Mayor Fopoli as well as Mayor Judice. Have known them both for some years and worked with them. I'm giving my support tonight to Mayor Judice. I've worked with them both. Mr. Judice has shown me attention to detail and dependability that I think would be very valuable here, and that is where I indicated my support's going, so that's where I will be voting tonight.
Councilmember Sparks?
I was sort of waiting to hear from what the other more experienced council members had to say on this one, because I have great respect for both people, and I think they both do an amazing job. So I would go along with whatever the rest of the council's consensus is.
Thank you. My, I think they're both would be excellent candidates on there. I do have a concern that Golden Gate Transportation does not even go as far as Windsor. So my inclination is to be more of having a representative that might be actually part of that transit route, not discounting the ferry, but when you look at the bus services, we don't even go that far up to Windsor. I think we believe we just go up to northern Santa Rosa at this point. So we now have two and two, so based on some of that information.
There you go, Laura.
I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Sparks on her ascension to Joe Manchin-level status.
Happy to be the less Virginia of Cattati, I believe. I would like to ask for a little more discussion on what is the role of the person on this board in terms of advocating for our particular region of the county, because that is, having the mayor of our neighboring city was appointed in marriage. city was appointed in Mayor Judice's favor. But I'd like to understand to what extent that's going to be important in this role versus somebody who is just going to advocate for the county as a whole, if anyone can speak to that.
Councilmember Harvey, were you going to address that or not?
No, I wasn't. But maybe we could ask some input from Mayor Fopoli on that, since he is familiar with that position and has been in-depth in finding more about it.
Mr. Fopoli, you are welcome to comment on there if you would feel so inclined.
So, Councilmember Sparks, your question is the importance of how close your representative lives? You're...
Whoops, you muted. Given Mayor Moore's concern that the transit doesn't go all the way to Windsor, I wanted to hear a little bit more elaboration on that, yes.
Sure, of course. Thank you. So, well, I think first and foremost, for me, the most important thing, aspect, if I'm being selfish about Sonoma County, is that we have a strong connection to our new Smart Train system. The reality is, is that it's already suffering tremendously because of ridership due to COVID. And we have to maintain a strong connection in Larkspur with Golden Gate Transit and the ferry system in order for Smart to have a chance at having decent ridership again. So I think that absolutely affects all of us. Windsor's getting smart this year for the first time, and I want to make sure that both agencies are well-funded. With regard to the bus system, the reality is that it's the only real way for anybody to get to the city if they have to for work or school, and they don't have their own transportation. So yes, you do actually have to take a connecting bus from downtown Windsor to Santa Rosa, but then you can get to the city. So that kind of, it does affect Windsor's wealth. But I'll be representing the entire county.
Thank you, Mayor Fopoli. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for some direction on there.
Could we move on to the other positions to give me a little more time, do you think? And then we can come back to that at the end? Would that be acceptable?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next position on that would be for MTC. We have four candidates, of which we should vote on three of them. I don't know that we need to rank them, but we could based on Councilmember Harvey's suggestion. Councilmember Ford?
Well, I just wanted to comment. I know that Councilmember Harvey suggested that we go along with the requirement that the City Selection Committee forward three to the Board of Supervisors. Several of the other cities have decided to only forward one name. And there's not a requirement that we send three to the City Selection Committee. So I think it's an open question whether we do one, two, or three. And if we do do three, I think it would behoove us to rank them if we want to have significant input.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Ford on this. We have to remember, this came out with all the disaster of CASA that we faced last time and the discovery that while historically we had sent one name forward to the mayors and councilmembers, and the supervisors had selected a name. When looking at the legality of it, it is clear that we're required to send three names, and the supervisors get to choose from those three names. So having said that, if we don't give three names, I think that might leave the door open for them to add additional names. So I think there's value in sending three names, although I know who I'd like to support. But I do think we should definitely rank them, whoever we send. I would like to suggest that we send Councilmember and former Mayor Hinton there. I will remember during CASA, both her as well as Councilmember Adams for Aurora Park were one of the few councilmembers that were willing to stand up as newer faces and try and be part of working on these important solutions, when many other people shy away because there was some controversy at the time. And I feel like that should be rewarded. And I'm sure when we get to A-Bag, we'll speak more about that. But definitely in the case of MTC, I think Ms. Hinton would be my first choice. After that, Ms. Fleming from Santa Rosa certainly makes a good case. Both Ms. Hinton and Ms. Fleming have contacted me. So I appreciate that. The others from Petaluma did not. And there's several ways to go there. So I'll just leave it at that for now, but that would be the direction I'd give.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford?
I agree with Vice Mayor Landman about my first choice. I think representative of another small city in the county is, would be very good for us, MTC. MTC distributes a lot of grant funding and paying attention to the mute of small cities is really important in that group, in addition to paying attention to the northernmost county. So I agree with that first choice. I was not contacted by any of the other, Councilmember Hinton contacted me and then the other three. So I'm just going on letters for the other three. And Councilmember Barnacle, or perhaps he's mayor or vice mayor, I don't know, Brian Barnacle's letter, most aligned with what I think are important directions for MTC to be looking at among those other three. So if we're going to forward more than one name, I would support Brian Barnacle for the second position.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harvey?
Yes. So I spoke with Nisa and I spoke with Mike Lee. So they would be my one and two. And then Brian Barnacle has been participating of late in a lot of the North Bay Division things. And I have been really impressed with what I've heard from him and along with Councilmember Ford. I mean, I think his career in energy and transportation policy, I think kind of aligns with what's going on with MTC. So I would choose him as my third. So you're going to have to keep track there.
Well, I missed that third one, Councilmember Harvey.
So Brian Barnacle is my third.
Okay.
Through the mayor, if I could real quickly, if this is helpful, because we've been down this road before. I'm seeing some agreement among the council so far, at least leaning towards Councilmember Hinton. But we, although we're supportive of the other people, we're all over the map there. One thing we could do is, if this is the final direction, and depending after Councilmember Sparks shares her thoughts, if we do, and I don't mean to jump the gun here, forgive me, Laura, but if we do wind up supporting Nisa, then we could allow the mayor the discretion to support any of the other three candidates, depending as the vote goes. Because, for example, say we picked Victoria as our number two, as I'd like to do. Perhaps she doesn't get enough votes, and it would be more helpful for him to vote for Mr. Barnacle. We could give him the opportunity to be flexible in the meeting. So if we can't come to a consensus, rather than racking our brains, we could do that with this or any of the other picks tonight. So I just wanted to suggest that.
Councilmember Sparks?
I just also wanted to support Brian Barnacle, Councilmember Barnacle, for this position. So I'll throw my weight there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I get to weigh in on this. And my particular position, and I don't know if the council would support this, but I would support Hinton as one, Fleming as two, and Barnacle as three. I think they line up more with most of what our constituents would be concerned with. So I don't know if that works for you guys.
I like Mark's suggestion that basically says, wait and see. It seems like we all agree on one, and depending upon where things are headed when you're in there.
Well, I could, I just saw Ben give a thumbs up to the mayor's suggestion. I could live with that. I like it just fine. If we have, if we get a little more consensus on that, perhaps we can go with that as a strong one for Ms. Hinton, a two for Fleming, and a three for Barnacle, and still give the mayor some flexibility if he needs it when he goes there for those secondary positions. Would that be acceptable?
Well, yeah, because it might end up being marked for all we know that maybe ultimately Brian might be two, because that's the way the air is flowing.
Exactly. So if we have a rough consensus, we know where we're in the top, we're pretty aligned, I think, in the next few picks, and then we leave a little flexibility there, maybe we've got what we need.
Councilmember Ford?
Vice Mayor Landman covered it. I'm good.
Terrific.
So are you okay?
Am I okay? Yeah, I'm okay. Okay, so if it sounds like we have a consensus that we could go with Hinton, Fleming, and Barnacle, and if the shifting winds of change occur at that meeting on the 11th, we can vote then, and you guys won't know until afterwards anyway.
I think we did suggest, though, that was for the two and three position. I think we were pretty locked in number one.
Correct. Okay, I think we, I think we have a consensus on that one. Okay, so shall we go back to Golden Gate Bridge, or shall we move on to the Board of Directors appointments?
Depends if Laura's ready.
I think this is a really difficult decision for me, because I think both people do an amazing job. But I think I'm going to support Mayor Gerard Judice in Aurora Park, because I think our interests as neighbor cities are just so closely aligned. And I really want to thank Dominic, or Mayor Fopoli of Windsor. Very, very difficult decision.
Thank you. So I think we have a three-two on that one for the Golden Gate Bridge, and that would be Mr. Gudice. Okay, now we can move on to the Board of Directors appointments. The first one is for A-Bag, and we have...
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to make a correction here. This, in our presentation, it might have been corrected in this presentation, but in our packet, packet said that it was for the Regional Planning Committee, and it is actually for the Executive Committee. So I just want everyone to kind of get that, number one. And number two, if you look at the actual letters that were sent in, Susan and Ariel and Dennis all were seeking the position. However, Enix and his, it was a little, for the alternate on the Planning Commission, if available, which the Planning Commission isn't what it is that we're looking here. So we didn't really get anyone that applied for the, for an alternate. So that's a little bit, I don't know.
You broke up a little bit on that, Councilmember Harvey?
So we got no application. Sorry, we got no letters for the alternate. We got three letters seeking the member position, and Dennis also asked for a position that isn't even available, and that's on the Planning Committee.
Okay. So I wonder if it would be appropriate if we do not consider Mr. Postake right now? Dr. Postake? And we look at...
Well, he, so, no, so he's, he did for the member of the Executive Committee, or he said as the alternate on the planning. And that isn't even on here. So I think his letter was a little bit confusing.
Okay.
Let me find that letter.
Well...
But we got, no one applied for the alternate. So my question is, can we even, or, an alternate position if we didn't get any letters for an alternate position?
I don't know that we could place any money in that if we didn't get any letters for it.
Right. That was my concern.
Well, if they don't show up at the meeting, we can appoint whoever we want. It's their own fault, by gosh.
Yeah, Dennis's letter specifically says, request for appointment to the A-Bag Planning Committee if a position is available, or if position open, or request for appointment to the A-Bag Executive Board. So, yeah.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, none of the three mentioned any alternate positions in their letters, which makes me believe that the clerk who sent the letters out checked with them in creating. Because the direction we got was very clear that Dr. Postake was applying for either the member or alternate, and the other two were only interested in members. So, I mean, we can leave the alternate position up to Mayor Moore, as far as I am concerned, and see how it goes, you know, he can see how it goes on Thursday. I don't feel like we should spend too much time on that. But all three of them did apply for the member position, and I think we...
Correct.
Okay.
But I think then if she did talk to him, I would have thought that we would have gotten some kind of a correction letter saying that it was applying for the alternate, rather than the way it was worded in her letter. And it could be she just didn't realize there were two different committees, and when she saw the "or," assumed that that was what the alternate was. Maybe. But we don't...
Vice Mayor Landman?
Well, yeah, I think we're not going to get clarity on that one tonight. I think Councilmember Ford called it, and I want to thank Councilmember Harvey for the usual attention to detail and clarifying that for us. Even though it might not feel like clarifying, I'm glad that that was put forward for us to be aware of it. But what we have here is the typical situation we run into all the time. All three of these people are serious candidates that could do a good job. Councilmembers Adams and Kelly have both reached out beyond just a letter, have done phone calls, I know at least to me. And their history, for both of them, are rather extensive, and they both have very good backgrounds. They're in the quandary of, they're both really good. I would just share, as I shared with Councilmember Kelly, as much as impressed as I was that I would be supporting Councilmember Adams, because, because number one, they're very close, but Councilmember Adams has some more time and grade working towards this. And more importantly, when we needed people to step forward, to start getting involved in A-Bag and MTC, she was willing to do it when others weren't. And I feel that gives just that small little bit extra that makes me comfortable suggesting her. With that, the good news is, we would be in good hands with any of these candidates. That I can tell you as being a councilmember. None of these people would do a bad job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. It sounds like we have some direction for two positions on the A-Bag Executive. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I was going to agree with Vice Mayor Landman about my first choice. I'm persuaded by Susan Adams' experience in A-Bag and the arena process and being there for the county. So between the other two, if it comes down to it at the meeting, Mayor Moore, I, I'm, Councilmember Kelly's credentials are incredibly strong for this position, and so I would support her over Councilmember Postake.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I would like to go with Susan Adams for the same, it's getting kind of late, as Vice Mayor Landman said. And I think I agree with you that Ms. Kelly's credentials are really good. And maybe one of the things that might be able to be considered at the meeting, because I know sometimes things come from the floor, is maybe it's possible that she can submit to the committee for an alternate. Maybe that might be something that she might consider, since there's also that position available. I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility.
Did you indicate previously that the Regional Planning or the Regional Executive Committee is only one position and not two?
No, it's two position. It's a member and an alternate. But nobody applied for the alternate. But nobody applied for the alternate.
Got it.
So a lot of times when there's member and alternate positions, as you'll recall, people will say, "I'll take this or that." But nobody did in this case, which is unusual, but it is what it is.
Right. Councilmember Sparks?
I noticed that Councilmember Kelly is still in the, in the meeting. I wonder if we could clarify with her whether she's interested in the alternate position.
I would certainly be willing to entertain a comment from Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, councilmembers. Yes, at this point in time, I do have four other cities who have nominated me as their first choice, and there is somewhat of a confusion about what Santa Rosa voted on. But if I do not get the number one member position, I certainly would be honored to serve as the alternate should I not have the necessary majority votes to be your member.
Thank you.
So do you have enough direction on this, Mayor Moore?
I think so. It sounds as if there is an inkling to go with Councilmember Adams at this point, and potentially Councilmember Kelly as the alternate. Do I see any disagreement with that? Okay, we did have a public comment there. I don't know if we want to, I think we were going to open up the public comments until we were done with this, and then before we finalized everything. So with that, we have North Bay Division of League of California Cities, the Executive Board, one position. Mr. Sawyer, that's a given. Okay, Sonoma County Ag and Open Space. Three positions, a two-year term. Barnacle, Hinton, Kelly, and Palacios. Any direction on that?
Well, I'm hearing silence, so I'll jump in with a suggestion. I hate it. This is another one of the musical chair ones where there's a lot of seats, three seats, but unfortunately we have four people running, and two from the same city. I'd like to see Councilmember Hinton continue there, because I think some continuity is the good thing when you have a big change on the board, and there is a big change there. With that, we weren't able to support Councilmember Kelly for her interest in A-BAG to the degree she'd like, but perhaps we could support her here and help make that a little bit better. I think that would be a valuable move. And I would be happy to support Councilmember Palacios, but then we'd be supporting two people from Healdsburg. And I don't know Mr. Barnacle. We were supposed to actually have a call, and he didn't get back to me, but I think, given his background, and given the fact that Petaluma is pretty close to Katati, and if we look at geographical stuff, with Barnacle, Hinton, and Kelly, we're keeping the geography, the geographical representation where it was previous. So that's a suggestion for a way to approach this.
I would second that and fully agree with you.
Councilmember Ford?
Me too.
Councilmember Sparks?
I really want to agree with all of that. There's one thing that holds me up, which is that I am really interested in raising and promoting the voices of people of color in these leadership roles, and young people. And I think it would be a great opportunity for Councilmember Palacios to be able to bring that perspective.
Thank you very much. So we have, I would concur with Vice Mayor Landman, and so we have four in favor of that particular order, being Hinton, Kelly, and Barnacle. Okay. Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit Board of Directors. Looks like we have just Miss Bagby for that, so that's easy. Councilmember Sparks?
My hand was up from before. I apologize.
And then Smart, Board of Directors, non-SCTA, Sonoma County Transportation Authority, member, one position, Deborah Fudge. So I believe with all of that, I do have some direction in voting, and I will open this up to public comment.
Need some more, go ahead.
I just wanted to add on that, that I think Brian Barnacle, as a new councilmember in Petaluma, has a lot of very progressive ideas that very align with what Katati is all about. And I was, I'm really glad that the council is supporting him. And I would like to see him as second, actually, instead of Victoria Fleming. I'm just disagreeing with the mayor on that. So that's my stance on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow!
So, thank you all for that. That's always a fun process. Especially, I sympathize with you, Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford. When you don't necessarily know any of these people, where they're coming from and what's going on, other than the introduction in a short period of time, it can be difficult. So I sympathize with you on that. And if our esteemed city manager would kind of get back to me and let me know what you think we have, so that we're all in agreement.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Can I add one thing? I just would like to add, for Councilmember Sparks, I think it's really important, as these new councilmembers come on, that they really try and go forward and try and get on some of the different boards within Sonoma County. And I think that that's, it can kind of get their legs and stuff. So I would have you encourage Skylark to go ahead and, you know, see what she can do within her own council and boards, and kind of participate in that manner.
Thank you. City Manager Obit, if I may interrupt you for a minute. I think we need a vote to go beyond 10 o'clock. If I could get a motion from somebody, I don't think we have much left after that, other than the financial on some minor reports.
So move, a second?
Gotcha.
That's it.
A motion and a second to go beyond 10 o'clock. Can we get a roll call on that?
Councilmember Harvey? Yes. Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. And Mr. Obit, back to you.
Do you matter, so do you want me to do a recap on the voting, or you got that?
I think about the voting, I just want to make sure that we have the appropriate parties. We're all in agreement on that. Yeah, you can give me the voting then.
Okay, so just real quick. Yeah, City Selection Committee, where we landed was Teresa Barrett for A-BAG, or I'm sorry, Bay Area Quality Management District, Golden Gate Highway and Transportation District, Gerard Judice, LaFco, Mark Landman, MTC. We have Nisa Hinton as a primary, and then allowing them, well, and a sort of an initial position of Victoria Fleming as number two, and Brian Barnacle as number three, but allowing the mayor flexibility to adjust those second and third votes as needed, depending on how the meeting goes. Nothing for RAN, and nothing for the Oversight and Board Committee. For the Board of Directors appointments, A-BAG Executive Board, we have Susan Adams as the primary, and Ariel Kelly as the alternate. North Bay League, John Sawyer, Sonoma Ag and Preservation District. The three candidates are Ariel, or I'm sorry, Nisa Hinton, Ariel Kelly, Brian Barnacle. The order that we picked, that we picked them in was Nisa Hinton first, Ariel Kelly second, Brian Barnacle third, in case that ranking matters during the discussion. Smart, Melanie Bagby, and Smart, non-SCTA member, Deborah Fudge.
Thank you very much.
All right.
That should make it clear as mud for Thursday.
Mayor Moore, could we have a five-minute break before the last agenda item?
Absolutely. So we got 9:59, let's come back at 10:05.
Oh, but I want to hear about the budget.
I know Angela's going to hate us, but we'll come back at 10:05. Well, it looks like we are at 10:05. Ms. Burgess, did we have everybody on?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I can't see all of our attendees or panelists, if that doesn't matter. So with that, we'll move on to our major budget with Ms. Quarter. Ms. Quarter, thank you so much for your patience. Sorry we kept you up so late.
No problem. I'm getting used to it.
Well, you can go in late tomorrow, so.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of our community that are still here with us. Tonight, I'm proud to kick off our next stage of the city's budget cycle by reporting out our review of the midyear's budget to actuals. Mayor Moore, I'll see, would you mind skipping to the next one? Thank you. So with this report, we'll give a brief overview of the budget process, and then jump into a citywide overview, and then a detailed summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures, followed by our enterprise funds, also known as the water and sewer funds. And then, like we like to end everything, we want to end with what that cash and investments portfolio really looks like, since that's a required necessity to keep our budget moving forward. So our budget year 2020, 2021, budget highlights. The year-to-date report as of December 2020. So we've continued to focus on really the economic development, and it's really changed with COVID-19 continuing to be an ongoing thing. During our budget planning process before, we knew this was going to be a piece of a short-term strategy, but not realizing it's now a big piece of this fiscal year that we're taking on to continue to support our local businesses and our overall economic development strategies. We've also, we're continuing to focus on our core services and the efficiencies in those processes due to, again, COVID, as well as other emergencies that continue to come up, like a power shadow. We are continuing to meet and exceed our reserve policies for the general fund and our enterprise funds, and we are strategically funding our capital improvements, specifically those street improvement projects. So in recent news, we are still working hard to continuously improve our financial reporting, and so we did receive the budget, our CAFRA award last year, and we're going to continue to improve our financial reporting in order to meet the guidelines of budgeting excellence, as awarded by the CSMFO and the GFOW. So in order to receive this budget award, the city has to meet national guidelines for effective presentation, and these have to focus on providing a sound policy document that shows a financial plan, an operational guide, all while serving in a plain English that can be used by your community. So where are we now in this budget cycle? So for the fiscal year 2021, we adopted this budget in June of 2020. So it's a long time ago, but we're still working on those numbers. And since then, we've presented those monthly and quarterly updates of where we are, what our revenues are, where we see ourselves going, and what adjustments we might need to be making. Now, as the midyear is closing, and we're kicking off our next budget year cycle, looking towards our strategic plans and our workshops coming up. So please keep an eye on the city website for any of those updates for those budget workshops, as we'd like to get our community members engaged in these to see what strategic objectives they'd like to have council address and push us towards. So citywide, where are we, and what is the city looking like as far as revenues and expenses? So overall, the city's revenues are in line with budget at approximately 50.4%. There's definitely the general fund and special revenues are less than that 50%, and this is primarily just due to those timing of the revenue sources that come into those funds. Expenditures are also in line with budget at just- Expenditures are also in line with budget at just less than 50%, and this is where the capital projects play a big role in that use of funds due to the projects that were rolled up for our streets projects in the fall of 2020. Um, so this is also, again, just a summary of the same things. The revenues, again, citywide, we're on track. We don't anticipate a big significant change. I know last year, we did propose a budget adjustment at midyear because we saw sales tax coming in higher, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but we're really not seeing anything drastically different where we would need to make any adjustments at this point in time. And we'll get and dive into this a little bit deeper as we get into the general fund. So a picture of our public works putting out the great platforms. We'll just go a little bit of a deeper dive into our primary fund, which is the general fund for the city of Kattati. So approximately our revenues were at 3.8 million, or 48.5% of budget, where our expenditures were at 4.3 million and 49.9% of budget. And knowing that does also, again, a big piece of that is the capital expenditures. So another way we like to compare the revenue expenditures is not just against budget, but we like to compare to is where were we at this same time last year? So this fiscal year-to-date compared to the prior year, we're looking at revenues are up by approximately 12%, while expenditures, including those transfers for capital projects, are down by approximately 1.8%. So going a little bit deeper into those revenues, so what are those revenue sources and those changes in those revenue sources compared to last year as well as compared to our budget? So our primary revenue sources, of course, are our sales tax, our other taxes, the community development charges, and the public works charges for services. These are all those that have changed from the prior year. So the increase in sales tax that we've been continuing to talk about during our monthly updates are really due to that mix of the essential services we actually found that we have here in Kattati and our, um, some of our core businesses still being able to remain open during this elongated shelter-in-place order, as well as the increased county pool for tax receipts for those online sales, uh, which was made under the Wayfair decision is what you'll hear referred to. The other taxes are primarily made up of the cannabis business taxes. As we continue to introduce more businesses into the city that are subject to those taxes, again, those revenue sources will grow. And lastly, those community development and public work service fees are related to primarily due to the testing ranch. And as we spoke about earlier, the continued development there, as more housing comes on, we get additional permit fees, and those fees for services increase. So just because you can't put everything in numbers, even though you might want to, I like to provide a little bit of a picture of what proportion of these revenue sources are that are coming into the general fund. So you'll see that, again, the sales tax is really half of our overall revenue stream into the general fund, and a quarter of it is property taxes. We do get some other transfers ins from our special revenue funds, primarily Prop 172 does come in to support the police services. But again, we're still back to the community development charges, other taxes, and then other miscellaneous licenses, permits, and franchises. Those permits and franchises are ones we typically see come in at the very end of our fiscal year. So we will see those increase towards the latter half of our next two quarters. But again, it is still considered a smaller portion of our overall revenue stream. So this is really pretty indicative of where we'll still see ourselves at the end of the fiscal year proportionately. So even though sales tax received are so vital to our ongoing city operations, it's important to note that not all sales are subject to sales tax. And other sales taxes collected, um, by businesses and submitted to the state, we only get a small share of what is collected here in Kattati. So a purchase of one, a purchase that is subject to tax in Kattati that maybe is about $100, that's subject to that 9.25% tax, the city only receives less than $2. So even though it's a big part of our revenue stream, it really is not a big chunk of the taxes that are out there being paid on the purchases in our city or online. So other sales tax received to date, the annualized estimate is in line with budget. And so again, this year, we're not thinking that we're gonna need an adjustment like we thought we did last year. This year, we're really pretty in line with where we thought we were going to be, and we hope to be at the end of this fiscal year. So just like sales tax, uh, property taxes collected by the property owners here in the city, we actually receive less than 11%. So for every dollar of property taxes, the city only receives 11 cents of that. Um, so that's a good kind of thought process of what we're representing to our city. We get a lot of use in streets and all kinds of other services that we can provide, which is 11 cents of that dollar that goes to property taxes. These property taxes are received twice a year, so again, this is just half of a portion. We did note that their property taxes did decrease by 5.3% over the prior year, and this is property is primarily due to, uh, commercial reassessments due to COVID and other situations. Commercial buildings can get to reassess themselves, and so they, there was a decrease there, and so we are seeing that decrease a little bit, um, but nothing that's off the mark for our budget at this point in time. So that's our revenues. So it's gonna dig a little bit deeper into, okay, that's where all the funds are coming in. Where, where is it going out and where are we at with our budget there? So a summary of our expenditures by type shows that, um, overall cumulative midyear general fund expenditures decreased from the prior year by approximately 1.8% or $79,000. Most of the decrease was due to the reduction in transfers out required for those capital projects, which was offset by increases to salaries and benefits, as well as other contract services, mostly in need of supporting services during this ongoing emergency. And then to kind of break it up into a different picture, we like to slice it up by not just by the activity of expenditures, but what department the expenditures are coming out of. As you can see, um, uh, there are some increased expenditures, but they really are overall in line with what we expected for budget. Uh, the only outlier here is really council, and that's because we did have, um, the election last year. And so that pushed the timing of the expenses towards the beginning of the year rather than the latter. So now into the water and sewer funds, the enterprise funds. So the water and sewer enterprise funds, um, the table includes accumulated revenues and expenses compared for the first half of the fiscal year, as well as the revenue to budget for actual comparisons for the 2021, um, for these enterprise funds. The water and wastewater fund revenues are made up of charges for services, connection fees, and other revenues and development fees. The revenue for both the water and wastewater funds have continued to increase due to a combination of rate changes and increased usage. Prior year revenues, we did have, um, an increase due to, um, some one-time connection fees we received related to testing rates. And that was related to skip bond funding, that we kind of got a chunk of funding all at one point in time, and we did receive that last year as opposed to this year. Overall, enterprise fund revenues and expenses compared to budget are on target, and we expect it to do so for the remaining part of the year. One significant, um, difference was the increase in capital outlet expense for the wastewater fund over the prior year, and this is related to the William O'Lof sewer line replacement. So jumping right into a summary of cash and investments, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna go to the last page here. Just kind of showing you a breakout of, um, the, since the numbers don't always show you what you want, but, uh, this is really a depiction of where all of the, the cash and investments are by the types of funds. And I know we always kind of, I provide the bottom picture where it's the investment portfolio. It shows that we have everything very fairly balanced for our investment policy, where we have it invested in safe and secure funds, and we do keep a certain balance in operating. But it's also nice to see the cash and investments for the cash balances for all the different types of operating funds. So we have the general fund balance there, as well as the water and sewer funds as well. Um, again, ending balance was 16.7 million as of December 31st, 2020, for the first, uh, half of the fiscal year. And, um, again, investments are, are what they are. We are very, already very conservative, so there's not a higher risk, but that means there's also not a high return right now. So our, um, that is something we are, do see decreasing. I know, um, sorry, we spoke this up before, is that typically we budget very, very low for returns on investments, and that's where we are right now. We're not, definitely not receiving the same amount like we were last year, but we also did not budget to receive that significant amount because we knew they were decreasing. So in conclusion, the first two quarters of 2021 year are on track with budget. There's no additional budget requests or adjustments at this point in time, and if there are, we would definitely bring them to council for adoption. City staff will continue to update the council if any for testing changes that are deemed necessary, and we are definitely committed to exercising prudence and integrity of all the management, uh, management of the public funds. And we look forward to kicking off the strategic planning and budget process going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Quarter. As usual, excellent report. Um, I don't know if we have any questions from council or staff. Councilmember Harvey, are you sure?
I have no questions, but Angela, I, I appreciate all the detail, and thank you so much. And the pictures in the report make it even more enjoyable than just the numbers for those that don't like the numbers. John?
No, numbers don't lie. Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Okay, um, now we would move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, let me just give you one second.
All those numbers are throwing you off, isn't it? You're muted.
Did you mute on purpose?
No, I was, sorry, I was just basking in the, in the, uh, in the numbers there for, sorry about that. No, we don't wanna. Can I? So, um, all right, so on to quick, on COVID, the county vaccination program's still working through, um, the special higher-risk groups. So it's all Phase 1A tiers, all tiers are open. That's healthcare workers, first responders, skilled nursing facilities, and so forth. The county has started working into phase, uh, what they call 1B tier 1, which is primarily people over age 75. For the most part, I mean, that seems to be where they are right now. And, um, still finishing up the focus on special populations based on exposure risk for the job or in high-risk congregate living. Once we get to the general population, the state, I think, as you may all know, the state did change their, um, vaccination plan rather than going through, through a bunch of tiers as they get past Phase 1B tier 1. They're gonna be just moving into the general population by age, age band. So that should hopefully, um, make the vaccination program more efficient once they get to that. We did install more tents downtown at the end of January, and, um, we're now talking with other restaurants for installation of the final 20, uh, by 60 tents. We have two, two more tents to install. So that's going well, and everyone seems to be very appreciative of the, um, extra outdoor space since we remain in purple, and we probably will for a while. Outdoor dining is the, is the way for these restaurants to try to survive. Um, I did wanna point out, and it's, um, uh, I think everyone noticed that went to our website, but our website was down for several days due to a national outage for the website hosting company that hosts the city's main website. Basically, when you log into the city, the city site, and hit the landing, the homepage, that's the website that was down for a couple of days. And it hit hundreds of cities across the nation, and, um, you may have also noticed where our park also went dark. They have the same, leave the same hook in service. The city is off to, off its local road safety plan, which is intended to analyze collision histories with stakeholder and public input, and identify measures to make our roads safer. The plan's website is to go live in the next two weeks, and it'll be a forum to present, um, the plan's schedule, preliminary findings, and gather community input. And, um, this is sort of the next step in our safety program. The council, as you know, budgets money for, uh, safety improvements in the streets every year, and we've moved through the bulk of the, um, the low-hanging fruit. This is the next phase to really, uh, seek out where we go from here. The groundwater sustainability agency is making progress on the Giraffe Groundwater Sustainability Plan and plans to release it for public review in July or August, and also look for something called the GAT, which is the Groundwater User Information Data Exchange Mailer that'll be sent out on March 5th, so that's gonna be, coming up pretty quick. And why that's important is that anyone that owns a well, or we think we, as in the water agency is the lead agency, and the participating agencies think either has a well or could have a well, will be receiving letters, um, asking them information about their wells as part of the groundwater sustainability plan. Today, we opened bids for the three-way stop at West, uh, I'm sorry, at West Sierra, yeah, in School Street, and also, um, lighted, lighted pedestrian crosswalk at Cypress at West Sierra. And we got seven bids. It looks like we have some good prices, so we're planning to bring this back to council on February 23rd for consideration for award. Water conservation, um, although there is still time for rain this season, and, um, some things have been helped by some changes in how the water agency's been able to operate the reservoirs with the Army Corps, which should help retain additional water through the spring and have it available in the summer for in-stream flows. It's still, um, been below normal this year so far. And so the water agency and the water contractors, like such as the city of Kattati, have developed a campaign for this year, and, um, the slogan is "It's a Dry Year, Save Water With Us." So please look for this message to be pushed out on social media, water bills, and the city's website and other media outlet. Through FCTA, our CPA, um, there is a electric bike share program coming soon to our smart station and also downtown, our downtown in the near future. I believe the, uh, target date to, um, deploy these is in the spring of this year. And it's not just our smart station in our downtown, but along the smart rail line. There's gonna be hopefully some electric bikes there. And then, um, also, just, uh, I think at this meeting at least knows, we think we've lost most of the public at this point, but there will be a joint city council and planning commission workshop on land use and sequel at our next, um, city council meeting date on February 23rd. This will be, um, this workshop will be before the actual, uh, city council meeting, so it'll start at 5:00 PM. We also, um, will be doing a drawing for an iPad mini tomorrow on Facebook, and this is for people that signed up for our auto pay, um, for utility bills. We had over 550 people sign up for auto pay, so a lot of re-plant there, great defeat. And then, um, as the mayor mentioned earlier in this, um, meeting, this week is in our, is our inaugural Love Your Neighbor Week in Kattati, so each day has a different activity to participate in celebrating our community. Today is Chalk Your Walk, where residents decorate their driveways and sidewalks with chalk to spread positivity in their neighborhoods. Wednesday, tomorrow, we ask the community to show their local love by posting pictures of themselves on social media supporting the Kattati business. On Thursday, um, we will see how much Kattati rocks in our new rock garden that was installed in Delano Park. And so people are encouraged to leave their own decorated rocks in the garden for everybody to see. And then rounding out the week will be Valentine Day grams, which will be delivered to Kattati addresses, um, or businesses, and include a flower, candy, sticker, and personalized card to the registered recipients. So you might see us driving around delivering, delivering, uh, Valentine grams with love on Friday in our decked-out Valentine's car to almost 70 residents. in our decked-out Valentine's car to almost 70 residents. I haven't seen the car decorating yet, but I am definitely looking forward to that. Next Wednesday evening and Sunday morning, we'll be hosting two Zoom workshops on the Cattati Park playground improvements that will be coming soon, so you should be seeing advertisements on that very soon. So if you would like to take part in helping us decide what playground designs to install in Cattati Park this year, please join us, and you can also email Ashley@willson@catatacy.org for the Zoom invite. You can do that directly. In addition, this will also be available on the, on the sort of the public information to try to get people at the meeting. And then also, spring break camp registration is open, where we'll be hosting in-person camp during the week children are off from school. We'll be, of course, following all health guidelines to provide the most safe and fun environment possible, but part of that is, space is limited, so sign up early to ensure your spot. We also look forward to bringing our drive-in movies back in March and continuing for the spring, as well as other virtual and socially-distanced programs. So for any information, any information on any of these city programs or recreation programs specifically, you can contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or Ashley Wilson at catatacy.org, and also, of course, always on our city website and social media pages. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robid. Do we have any questions from the council for Mr. Robid? Not, not at this hour? Okay, thank you so much. Great job by the rec. department and you guys, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
And now we'll go to city council member reports. Anyone want to lead off on that one? Clearly not. Well, there we go. Councilmember Harvey?
I have a long list, councilmember Lass, but I'll try and be brief by getting into very much detail. I attended the waste management, one of the items is what are forward for purpose where and that's, and the second item, the waste characterization step shift when they're going to do it, because, because it's so expensive and we don't do it very often, to do the dry then in cheer and the wet season in early 2022, so that we get our money's worth added up. On January 25th, I attended a household hazardous waste ad hoc committee, and they gave us possible financing for household hazardous waste facility, North County.
Councilmember Harvey, I hate to interrupt you. You are breaking up, and I'm not picking up all the other words. I'm wondering if we can go to councilmember Ford and come back, and maybe your connection will be a little stronger.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
I won't give councilmember Harvey's connection much time to recover. I'm just going to, the Russian River Watershed Association, I'm a new board member there, got a crash course and introduction to the agency, and sat on overview with city staff of the work plan for the year, which is, which is an impressive body of work, so I'm looking forward. We have a board meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, I think the technical advisor committed that today.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, let's try you again.
All right, I'll try again. My internet was off time, huh? So on, then on the 7th, we had a North Bay Division kind of chat with Mike McGuire. Most of you know Mike, he went a lot of things lately, but it was really very well-attended and a lot of really good questions, and I think Mike with quite a list of things to work on from people or area, so that was great. On the 20th, I attended the groundwater meet, said that guide program registration will be happening soon. We will also be having some rural residential focus groups soon, and they went over the schedule for the GSP. We've got a really tight schedule this year in order to get that done because it has to be submitted early next year. On 1/28, I attended the Bay Division coffee chat, and that was really great because we got to meet a whole lot of new people, number of new council members, the different, oh, within our division, so it's not just in Sonoma County, but it's all over, so that was great. On February 1st, we had our WAC meeting. Damian mentioned the water-saving partnership, so I won't go over that, and I think most of you saw in the paper the forecast of formed reservoir operations, final viability assessment report, there was a press release on that. And just of note on that, just so people are with that, we were able to save 20% of the water in Lake Mendes Elk, which is about 11,000 acre feet. So that's pretty incredible because that water would have been let out had we not done that, or looking to do that process in at least four other dams, so that's pretty exciting. On 2/4, I attended my area's beat meeting. It was great. Thanks to parish officers, I think it was about people at our meeting, and it was great to have the officers do that. And then last, I feel like speed-talking here, last, to remind everyone that the North Vision meeting will be, meet 25 at 1:30, is on racial equity, and it features presentation from Stephen Menendian of UC Berkeley's Othering and Belonging Institute, so that should be pretty good. That's all.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Actually, I think councilmember Sparks had her hand up before me, and it seems like she has a question or wants to comment, so if it's okay with you, I'd be happy to let her go first.
Well, I typically, typically go with age before beauty, but I would certainly make an exception in this case. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to get out a question just because councilmember Harvey, you're, you cut out when you're saying the name of what that last meeting is that you were mentioning on the 25th.
Oh, it's the North Bay Division General Membership Meeting, Thursday, February 25th.
Thank you. If councilmember Lemon, if you'd like to give your report first, that would be just fine with me.
No, go ahead. You have the floor, let's do it.
Okay, so I just have one, one meeting to comment on, which is I went to the Health Action meeting on Friday, and I'll be very fast. They gave us a very excellent presentation about the Caritas Village project that is slated to be built. They're saying they're going to, they're just over a year from opening, and it sounded very exciting. 47,000 square feet of emergency shelter space and 128 units of permanent affordable housing. They had an item that they asked for from people who are there, which is if we're willing to send a letter of support from our organization, it will help them with their competitiveness for grants, so that was just something to put on your radar. We also had an excellent presentation from Cloverdale about city of Cloverdale and their Health Action Network chapter there are trying to start buying into the self-healing communities model, which is basically a way of looking at policy and planning through a lens of trying to interrupt the cycles of adverse childhood experiences being transferred intergenerationally to younger, younger folks, and it's something that I'm going to be doing a little bit more research into, and you might be hearing more about that, because they were asking for us to consider, as a city council, adopting as basically a commitment to use the self-healing communities model to, in our deliberations, that we would think about those kinds of factors, so it's something new. And then last, we received a report on messaging that the county is planning to do regarding COVID vaccines, and they're focusing on this say yes theme, say yes to leaving COVID behind, say yes to the vaccine, say yes to protecting our communities. They're very concerned that there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy and skepticism out there, and so I think once the vaccine becomes more available for the general public, maybe we can play a role in helping to promote that. I heard a disturbing number even on the radio today that nationwide, 50% of adults say they're willing to be vaccinated, which was a stressfully low number in my mind, so that's something to be aware of. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks? Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, well, I certainly hope that willingness to be vaccinated grows, and I think that's what we are seeing, at least recently, that's beginning to rise, so we'll cross our fingers through that. I know a lot of us in my age group are certainly ready as soon as it comes available, so there won't be a problem there, I can tell you that. Two quick reports, one from Sonoma Clean Power. You may remember reading in the paper, there was a owner of a local bank in the last year that had been working through some well-reported lawsuits to block some GHD-reducing efforts, both in Windsor and Santa Rosa, related to the electrification of new homes and reducing the use of natural gas in new homes. And I had mentioned last meeting that Sonoma Clean Power had about somewhere north of $20 million invested in that local bank for some years, and so I did bring that up at our previous meeting to this week's one, and suggested that, not in a punitive fashion, but where we invest is important. When you have more than $20 million to invest, that can be a tool for something positive, but you certainly wouldn't want to use it to reward something that works in opposition to your organization's values. So at any rate, I just wanted to report that our meeting the other day, staff reported they'd begun the process of moving those funds to other banks, local banks that are more in sync with the direction and values of our organization and our rate payers, so wanted to share that. Sonoma County Transit Authority, I just wanted to mention quickly to staff, I'm sure you're already aware of this, but one item we had, 4.1.2 from MTC, this is the Safe and Seamless Mobility Quick Strike Program. I don't know how you even turn that into an acronym, I don't think you can, but what it is, is some money from MTC, I think, what are they talking, three or four million maybe to our region to be spread. It's a competitive program, and they're looking for projects, as the name would suggest, that could be done quickly, and the emphasis is like bike bed safety and mobility, so good projects for Cattati. I don't know if it works for us, because typically, things like this in MTC, the paperwork is enormous, the time and cost of doing it, sometimes it almost isn't worth it. This was something that the mayor of Santa Rosa pointed out with some concern for all of us, but at any rate, I just wanted to flag it for staff, if you haven't seen it, I know this came out close to the end of last month, and MTC had some further guidance early this month, so just wanted to share that, and maybe if we're lucky, we'll find something Cattati has on the plate, ready to go, that fits, and we'll be able to do it. So that's my report for this week, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. And a couple of things regarding REMIF and the transition to, with ParsAC, the new CERA, as you can imagine, the insurance rates are significantly higher. We will have a presentation coming down the road with our director on that, Amy Northam, that'll be coming up down the road. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was, I have to look at the date there to make sure, the Cattati Chamber of Commerce will have their drive-through crap feed on February 20th. So since we can't do it in person, they're going to do a drive-through, and that will be one of their fundraisers for the organization, so I would encourage you to support that if you can. And that's it on the public, on the city council manager, city council reports. Now I would go to public comment on non-action agenda items, if we have any that want to comment on that. And it does not look like we have any. Let's see, do we have any information received after the agenda was posted? Ms. Burgess?
Nothing further.
Thank you so much. Unless we have anything further, I thank you all for another late meeting, it's a lot of information. I will look forward to seeing several of you on the 11th at the city, city council mayor's meeting. It'll be the first one of the year, we'll probably have some direction on how this is going to look going forward. Not having those in person, of course, makes a difference. Last year was completely thrown off. And other than that, stay safe and talk to you soon. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.